So I guess we will call the work session to order and allow whomever to come up and speak and get us started.
So, I guess I will introduce, I'm sorry.
Good call buddy, well timed.
And now camera.
This is Kim Johnson, and he's with the State of Wyoming. So, I'm gonna kind of hand it over to him, but he's been a huge resource for us, and thank you for coming to talk to all of us. But he's gonna talk to you guys about FEMA today, so.
Okay.
Do you want me to pass anything out?
Sure, if you could, I'll take care of the council, those are my card and handout that I have. Mayor Nicholson, thank you very much for the opportunity to come here to Rawlins this evening and to speak with the council. I bring greetings from the state government in Cheyenne and my director, Ms. Lynn Butt. I am an emergency preparedness specialist with the state of Wyoming. I've been with the state for about 14...
Linky, beat you to it.
Great, great, thank you, thank you. I've been with the state for about 14 years. I have worked 12 of those years as a program coordinator with the National Flood Insurance Program. Just a little bit about my background and where I come from. Being with the state for 14 years, I worked across all mission areas for Homeland Security. We are the, since 2002-03 timeframe, we're the subsequent agency to what many people knew as Wyoming Emergency Management Agency. We moved under the governor's office in the early 2000s. I've been with them since 2006 after a career in the United States Air Force. Got about 27 years under my belt in Wyoming from being stationed here, met my wife, her family, fully invested in four degrees with children at the University of Wyoming. So, I am your neighbor, I'm a Wyoming property owner also. So, just kind of a perspective, one of us here in the community. What's my role with the National Flood Insurance Program? Our role is a state intermediary agency, a state employee. I work as the liaison between the federal government, as enacted by Congress, the Federal Emergency Management Agency administers the program on behalf of the federal government. And I work at the state level, and then with the 85 cities, towns, and counties that participate in the program. And the city of Rawlins is one of those participating communities. We've come here at this point now with a major mapping project, which I'll talk about in detail as we move through it, but I think that it's critically important to first kind of give a overall overview, and that'll take me about 10 minutes or so, and we'll kind of work through this handout slide deck that I've got to give a overview of the program to give us for the discussion between staff and the council this evening to kind of set a framework for our discussion. And then we'll spend the remaining time in what I call like a guided discussion, question, and answer period. My main goal is to make sure that either I answer this question this evening, or take a question back for further research, in case that I may not be able to address the council or the professional staff's questions here this evening. So with that, if that is okay with you, sir?
Yep.
I'll kind of delve into the slide deck that you've got in front of you to give a little bit of a overview. On slide, on page two there of this handout, this is just the main points, the five key topics that I'll discuss kind of in an overview briefly at an executive level. We'll talk about the program overview, talk about mapping flood maps, insurance regulations, and roles and responsibilities of a participating community, and how all these interrelated pieces and parts work together. And we'll kind of take it in a, hopefully in a logical, logical manner. Moving to the slide deck number three in our overview, the purposes of it. The key purpose of this program is risk reduction for life, safety, and property. It originated in the 1960s by federal legislation established in 1968 to bring the program into being after a series of huge devastating hurricanes and other natural disasters and floods in the United States, because there's a tremendous recovery gap. When you talk about the mission areas and disaster response, start with preparedness, move to response, work into recovery, and then the fourth of these is mitigation. How do you mitigate natural hazards, and particularly in this case, flood hazard? Now, in my duties at Homeland Security, I do more than just the flood insurance program, work across all of those four broad mission areas, and have experience, particularly I'm the flood guy at the agency, but also the water guy. For all issues related to water with state agencies and federal agencies, as they intersect in our agency, all of that work comes across my desk to include the National Flood Insurance Program, which actually, we'll get to it in a second, but it fits into the mitigation role. But the key thing is risk reduction for life, safety. And flood risk is a very, very challenging topic. We could spend multiple days in talking about it, and what it means to the residents of Wyoming. I work in all aspects of flood risk in the state, from snow melt, flash floods, to ice jam flooding, and it happens in all 23 counties, in some varying degrees of order of magnitude and level, but it is present. And one of the best compendiums of history for that, and an excellent tool for the council and for professional staff, is the Carbon County portion of your hazard mitigation plan that you are signatory to. Now, there's a hazard mitigation plan that makes FEMA funding for disaster and disaster recovery available, which is state-level plan that's posted on our website. And Carbon County is a recent signatory to what we call Regional Emergency Response Area Three, which is Carbon and Albany Counties. It has a compendium of information on all hazards, but it's got an excellent flood hazard chapter. And the community signed on to that plan as a signatory, and it makes certain mitigation types of funding for recovery from a flood disaster available to you as an eligible applicant. So, and I'll come back to that a little bit later this evening and talk about that in more detail. But the Carbon County portion of that dual county mitigation plan is a very, very valuable resource to the professional staff and also to the leadership of the city here of Rawlins. Couple of the key things is the NFIP overview. It identifies floodplains and risk. There are a number of federal agencies that do identify risk, but the main risk identifier federal agency is the Emergency Management Agency under the NFIP. They probably do the largest amount of work nationwide. This program also gives you a framework for floodplain management. And floodplain management can be comprehensive from beginning with localized watershed management, public works, stormwater runoff management, and drainage plans. So it's a building block nature that starts with the watersheds, the small basins within the city that the city would have jurisdiction for, and understanding drainage, stormwater runoff, and development of floodplains. So as a body of knowledge, those three areas really are integrated to each other. And throughout Wyoming, you know, drainage plans, master drainage plans, those type of hydrology and hydraulic analysis are challenging to do, costly to do, and very challenging to upkeep for our smaller mid-level and even for our large communities. The key thing is though, as we transport our way through the flood risk concept to flood control, drainage projects, stormwater management, control of floodplains, is that in the final step action of that, in a hazard that cannot be physically mitigated, meaning that you can't do a structural activity to mitigate it, the last mitigation step to hedge is to insure against a risk that you cannot physically mitigate. And conceptually, it's no different than the risk for automobile, life, health, all of those different types of parameters. And in flood, this program makes it available, because until just recently, there was no way to purchase private flood insurance that is underwritten by commercial companies in the United States. For the vast majority of the nation's history, there was no insurance that was available. And the federal government, through legislation through Congress, took the steps in the 1960s to form an insurance fund that made insurance available to participating communities in this program with the initial act beginning in 68, and it's been modified by several different pieces of federal legislation, acts passed by Congress that modified this program over the years. And we can do a deeper dive into that just a little bit later. If we move to slide four, how does it work? It's pretty straightforward. It's a mutual agreement between the federal government and the community. And we'll talk a little bit here in a couple more slides about how Rawlins originally entered the program. But it's a resolution that's passed by the governing body of the political subdivision. It's a short application, and the community is accepted in, once the community agrees to regulate the mapped special flood hazard areas, the floodplains that are delineated on that. Thus, the program's based on mapping, insurance, and regulations, which are mutually supportive. Those are the three legs to the giant stool of the National Flood Insurance Program that they, based upon the maps that are made by the federal government, the insurance that's provided by the federal government, and the regulations that are codified by the federal government, but actually implemented through local ordinance, as it would be here in the community. One little tangent to go on to is that the state statutes in Wyoming are silent on management of a mapped floodplain. That authority through the statutes in the state are to empower local government, meaning in this instance, cities, towns, and counties, to implement those land use development regulations that it sees fit to do so. And that's why in my role, I'm not a regulator, but I'm advisory, and I advocate for the state's interests and local government's interests, but also ensure that the participating communities are compliant in the program. So, we'll step on over to, moving right along through this portion, we'll go to five, in maps and flood data. That's kind of a little bit of the reason we're here tonight. But the overall aspect of it, or the maps and the flood data, meaning the engineering data that supports the maps, how you get to the designated and delineated areas on a map. In general, these are used for regulating development of flood-prone areas that'll be annotated on the map. It's used for rating insurance policies by the federal insurance administration, which is also part of FEMA, and it's implemented through policies that are sold by licensed insurance agents in this program. And then lenders and federal agencies use to determine mandatory purchase requirements in lending. And we'll talk a little bit more about this in detail, of how that happens, and what effect it has on a property owner who has a mortgage that is subject it has on a property owner who has a mortgage that is subject to federal regulation, and they're also in the mapped floodplain. We'll talk just a little bit more about that in detail. In any of these topics we're talking about here, we can come back and do a deeper dive on them. This is just kind of just the overview. An overview of mapping for Rawlins. It was first mapped in May of 1974, when I was in the eighth grade. And so that is some of the original mapping data that was done. That was also, that's about the earliest time that you'll see any flood insurance mapping that was done by the federal government was done early on. It wasn't very, very detailed mapping. The mapping that we have today is state-of-the-art, very, very, much more accurate. If you've looked at an old flood insurance rate map or a flood hazard boundary map, and if you are real inquisitive, this program was first administered by HUD, Housing and Urban Development, in its inception, because the Federal Emergency Management Agency was not created until 1977. And then this, but you'll find in old historical maps, they'll say HUD on them. You know, it's the same exact program, but FEMA inherited it from HUD by action of Congress about 1978. But the first map in Rawlins was in 74. Rawlins entered the National Flood Insurance Program in March of 1975. The 1974 map was slightly revised in September of 75. And then that September 1975 map was rescinded by an administrative action by FEMA in 1985. 1985 and 86 are a big watershed timeframe in changing how mapping and the insurance program was done. We migrated from the old, original maps to what are now called flood insurance rate maps. And at the decision point in that time, and this history is just a little bit cloudy, okay, as to the reasoning and the engineering justification, but the Federal Emergency Management sent documentation to the city of Rawlins, rescinding its map, meaning making the map basically void. So what happened in that, and you'll see in the bullet, the fourth one down, the non-special flood hazard area status. Rawlins was moved into non-special flood hazard area status with that action. What it did is Rawlins remained in the program, but without any delineated floodplains on the map. And there's a number of Wyoming communities that this occurred to. Probably based upon relative risk, you can read the words in the documentation. I provided that to Danielle. I'm not sure if she's, you know, shared that with the council, but that documentation was in our archive file at the state that talks about this rescission action. But at that time forward till where we are current day, today, the city of Rawlins is in the program without a map. And what that, what that does is that the four policy owners that currently have insurance in Rawlins, okay, you're still in the program. Flood insurance under this program is still available for sale to anyone within the corporate limits of the city of Rawlins, but you buy it at the minimal risk rate. It's the very least expensive of all policies. And that's your current status today, and that will continue until the new maps become effective. And we'll, we'll talk about the difference in those two programs. But currently in the program, you don't have to regulate the floodplain because technically you don't have a FEMA-mapped floodplain to regulate. Your original ordinance that you pass to come into the program technically is still valid, but it's kind of stuck in time in 1975. And the only reason that you would change from no special flood hazard status is with a map change. And we'll talk about this mapping program that began in, update program that's occurring in Carbon County, beginning in 19, excuse me, in 2015. This program that is actually driving the map change currently, early on, discussions began in 2014. It's been a 20-year probably project, beginning in the year 2000, to work our way through the state as far as from the perspective of the Federal Emergency Management Agency to update the maps. It's a seven-year project that actually kicked off in 2015 with a meeting at the Jeffrey Center between Carbon County, the county, and all of the participating communities. It's been, we're in year six of this journey, and it's scheduled to probably finish up in calendar year 22. But we're kind of at a milestone right now because the draft special flood hazard area maps, ADO, was released in 2018. And then the preliminary maps, basically what they'll look like in finished version, were published here in July of this year. Then we held what's a community officials meeting was held in August, and then we did public community outreach meetings in mid-September throughout the county. Page seven, the insurance. Insurance availability. I've already talked about this a little bit. It's based upon the community's participation. By participating, it's available throughout a participating community, and it is not dependent upon the floodplain. So any resident who desires to have a flood insurance policy in Rawlins today can buy one. In Carbon County, the only places that you cannot buy them are within the municipal boundaries of Sinclair and Hannah and Encampment, as they are currently non-participating communities. If you would please, my staff assistant made a mistake and included page eight. If you'd just strike that, that was an error. And I told a lie because my staff assistant is me. I made that error. I am a one-man show. I do it all. So if you would, you can just draw a line through page eight and remove that. That was a hidden slide that sneaked by when I did the final print this morning. Moving on to slide number nine, for regulations in participating communities. Participating communities that have special flood hazard areas are required to adopt and enforce the FEMA minimum requirements set out by FEMA to participate in the program. Very similar to building code, but not as prescriptive as it are, as building codes are to a design specification. But the regulations that are required do require a building code-like approach to, the concept is to build reasonably safe in a special flood hazard area. The only areas that are required to be regulated are those that are identified as a Zone A or AE on a special flood hazard area flood insurance rate map. And the easiest way, it's the areas in blue on a flood map, color-coded. Local ordinances must meet or exceed the minimum criteria. Jurisdictions have the ability to regulate to a higher level. And when you do a deep dive, and when staff will do a deep dive into the FEMA minimum standards, some of them, because it is a legislatively promulgated set of rules from the federal government, it sometimes will defy just a little bit of logic, but the legal basis behind that is this program has to prevent it from becoming a legal taking. It does not prohibit development in the flood hazard area, meaning the floodplain, but it requires, as a signatory to the program, it requires it to be done in a safe manner so there are standards. Sometimes if I were developing in the floodplain, I would probably exceed that minimum standard due to my own personal investment. That's just a little caveat, a nuance to the program. Now, on page 10, the participating community, your roles. These are the participatory roles, the key points that a community does. It will issue and deny floodplain permits in addition to any building permit. Now, we'll talk about a little bit more in detail about what constitutes development. Floodplain permits are more than just construction. It is basically any time that you intersect the special flood hazard area with construction, digging, pilings, placement of fill, moving materials, storage of materials. So it's, you have to look at it more kind of in holistic approach, any activity that you have in that area that can affect flood flow, such as stockpiling of materials. Not to say that they cannot be permitted, but they have to be taken into consideration. So the learning point is it's more comprehensive, development definition is more comprehensive than just construction. The community is responsible to inspect for compliance, maintain the development records, assist in map revisions, and assist residents with any issues. On slide 11, it's a state and federal rule to ensure the legal authority for adoption, and Wyoming state statutes do give the community the ability to do that. We provide technical and specialized assistance, and we ensure inter-agency coordination. And that's primarily my role. So on page 12, I've covered the key, five main topics of the program, just to introduce it for the council and as a refresher to it. I fully understand that there's minimal, has been minimal activity since 1985 as far as floodplain management, because you weren't required to do so. However, that will significantly change with the new maps that will come into effect. And with that, I'd like to pause, and then we can move into questions and answers on any topic, rewind to any point that I've already covered, and to do a deeper dive. And I would, at this point, let council and staff's questions and add their discussion, sir.
Okay. Does anybody have any opening questions they want to start with?
I guess, I'll start out with 1975, one. It's been a long time, and I don't know if I remember everything, but I do remember having these meetings, and we discussed one of the major problems that we had, and that was with Sugar Creek that runs, I believe, east and west. And when we talked about that, they talked about, we ended up talking with the county commissioner back then, and they decided that most of that Sugar Creek through Rawlins is already in pipe. That part that I'm talking about is further west, south of the tracks. And it, we talked about putting in the line, I think it was, I can't remember exactly, maybe 10 miles out, and it came down and it went into Hogback Lake, which is just a dry bed, and that's where if we had a flood of any kind, the water was supposed to dump into. That was kind of like where it was left. Nothing else, I haven't done about it. It seemed like, once we went through that meeting, there was a lot of questions. We never heard about it till now. It seemed like a long time to have to wait to find out that we have to have, we have to have insurance because we're living in a floodplain.
Okay, sir. I'd be glad, I'd be glad to address that. That's quite, that's, that's quite interesting. I personally love history and to understanding it and digging back through things. I can only, and that's some great information. I'll, I'll address it from my perspective and what I know today and what happens historically. The 1975 maps were made in what's called an approximate methodology. When the 1974 and then the 75 maps were made, they were not made with the boots-on-the-ground survey. They were not made with the detailed hydrology study. They were not made with the detailed engineering hydraulic analysis, nor were they model-derived. When I use the term model-derived, I'm talking about with modern, current-day flood modeling, that has changed quite a bit from the late 70s into the 80s, 90s, and the pioneers in flood modeling have been historically the Army Corps of Engineers. Today, fast forward into 2020, and we have multiple methodologies and different styles and types of flood modeling to do that, to do detailed information. That original map would have been drawn with these two key components. One would have been a flood flow, meaning the volume of water that would come down Sugar Creek, would be based upon a U.S. Geological Survey Regression Equation. For flood hydrology in most of Wyoming, that is the best data that you can get because it's extremely expensive to study a watershed and its runoff. And there has been no one, either state or federal government, that has done huge comprehensive studies to understand, particularly in the more arid regions of our state. So the Geological Survey developed these regression area equations that are kind of broad brush. They're the best available estimate. So they took that, and they took the best available topographic information. And for the earliest flood maps that were made in Wyoming, that information is usually a U.S. Geological Survey quadrangle map, which may have a contour of 20 or 40 feet. It's pretty challenging to draw a really accurate flood map based upon that wide of a contour, but the federal government, multiple agencies have done this, to draw flood maps, to create flood maps using that. Now, is it inaccurate? No. Is it the most refined map? No. Is it comparable to what can be done today? Oh, absolutely not. And that's, that's my books. I am not an engineer. I am not a hydraulic modeler or a hydrologist either. But I have worked in this and understand, you know, flood dynamics and contours and understanding that with those maps, there's a fairly good margin. The federal government was under the gun for the 1974 Flood Control Act to produce maps rapidly. And the whole nation got flood maps in the 1974 and 75 timeframe for participating communities. Because the real driver behind this was the insurance aspect. With its inception from 68 to about 74, nobody brought insurance in the program. And then there's a link there in that 74 timeframe, that's when the federal government decided if we are loaning and guaranteeing loans and insuring financial institutions that make loans into these flood hazard areas that are flood-prone, then we would desire for the risk to be carried by the by the property owner while making that loan. And that's the nexus of the mandatory purchase provisions that were implemented for the first time in 1974. So that's meaning that a mortgagee to a federally insured institution or with federal loan guarantees such as VA, FHA.
I don't think, I don't think that that helps those people to build new homes on both sides of that Sugar Creek that we're talking about. All these years, they build brand-new homes. And now they're being told that, hey, you built them on a floodplain, and therefore you're going to have to buy insurance if you're going to sell. I don't know how they have them mortgaged or what.
Yes, sir.
You see what I'm saying?
I can surely, I can surely understand that.
I was talking to, back that up. There was a county commissioner that I visited with. His dad, who's long passed away, was involved in a discussion when we had this floodplain conversation. And that's how we ended up coming up with solving that problem, is putting in that line that, if they have records of that or not.
Yeah, so, so Gavari, we did provide that information to FEMA as well as some additional information. And it was determined by them that it would not be sufficient for the 100-year plane and even more for the 10-year.
Then it wouldn't be.
It would not, no.
But I got, you know, you say that on the 10-year, but we've long since surpassed 10-year.
Yeah. So that actually, one of the questions I wrote down, and since you made that comment, Mayor, maybe it's a good time to ask is, I was going to ask Mr. Johnson to kind of touch about one of the questions we get asked really frequently, and we've talked a little bit about it, but he can tell you better than I, is we hear people say that it hasn't happened yet. So I wanted to see if you could touch on, like, what has happened versus what could happen a little?
Sure. And this will be to better answer Mr. Martinez's question here because it kind of, it comes in two parts. So we'll have to go back to the history of Sugar Creek and how it's flood modeled. So originally, it's actually flood mapped, not modeled. It's done in the 1974 and the 75 maps show, you know, Sugar Creek's headwaters are significantly to the southwest of town. Comes up, comes up by the railroad tracks, goes through that detention pond. And when you're looking at the natural aspects of that, then it kind of, because of development, it's hard to see where the original channel was. I have, I have gone boots-on-the-ground when I was here before in September and spent quite a bit of one morning out there, you know, walking it and driving it and looking at that detention pond. Because this goes back to kind of a little bit of the tie-in of the question about flood risk. I want to talk for just a couple of minutes about that in that historically, you know, each and every stream in Wyoming, from the ones that are near my house to wherever, have a flood potential. And the flood potential of a stream and the dynamics and the hydraulics that can be associated with that, it doesn't even have to be in a stream bed. It can be, if you lived there in Wyoming a while and you're somewhere at the near of a bluff or a bench, you get a really strong thunderstorm, you can realize and see that a tremendous amount of water can just flow, it's called sheet flow in the business, but it can flow over ground, and it can flow rapidly. The big trouble hydrology-wise in Wyoming, particularly in this area, it plagues us in Cheyenne, in Laramie, and in Rawlins, this whole area, and going over to further west to Rock Springs. And for about the first couple of hundred miles is a summer monsoon and tremendously heavy thunderstorms that can drop a huge amount of water in just a few hours or minutes. I had a thunderstorm in 2017. At my house in Cheyenne, we live out east of the mall, 1.8 inches in 20 minutes. In my Laramie County Conservation District, rain gauge, okay? And I'm a farm kid from West Texas. I know how to measure rain in a rain gauge. So what we talked about in flood risk management is we're talking about very, very large storms. So what happens on, what happens on Sugar Creek is that this is originally mapped kind of in a broad brush, but it'll probably closely approximate a large flood. Now, when we talk about flood recurrence intervals, historically, the whole family of people and engineers that do this use terminology that sometimes gets misunderstood by the public. These are recurrence intervals that have a probability that are assigned to them. The 100-year flood has a 1% chance of occurrence in any given year. It has a 26% chance of occurring in a 30-year period when you calculate the math based upon that. So now, that's a little bit, that's a little bit tough to get your mind around. But in a flood risk discussion, and the standard that is used for the federal program is the 1% chance event. Engineers will normally talk to this Q100, okay? Where the 100-year recurrence interval, 1% chance modeled event in any given year, that's a huge, that is a huge flood. Now, when you do these studies, it also goes into deeper. You can have the normal and what gets modeled, but you don't normally see it on a map. A 1, 2, 5, 10, 25, 50, 100 and 500-year events. Each one of those has a unique probabilistic occurrence. And here's where I want to diverge just a little bit in understanding how these maps are made. These maps are made upon a probabilistic event that can occur. It's not based upon the observed record necessarily. Now, if you've got 65-plus years of stream gauge data, which we do in certain locations, that can become a component in a hydrology study. The only place that we really come close in Carvin County is on the North Platte and places like Saratoga. So what happens with Sugar Creek is that it's modeled in a probabilistic model. And certain key assumptions may change over time. The original hydrology that was done to draw the 1974, 75 map is different than what is used today. In the flood insurance study that accompanies these new maps, you will find the detailed data that the federal government used to develop a model to approximate the floodplains that you see on the current new maps. So what really, what really happens here? And sometimes this, it happens in every community in Wyoming, is that there is a flood risk component on Sugar Creek. It has always been there. It is there today, and it will continue into the future. Now, there have been some mitigation actions that have been taken by the city of Rawlins since Rawlins was settled in '68, you know, when they came through with the railroad and establishing of the town. And that's the real true history of human intervention in the Sugar Creek floodplain. There's lots of things that happened in there. There's a railroad. There's also structural changes. There's diversions. And I find it really interesting that we talked about, you know, diverting way upstream from way upstream of the town to diverting it to Hogback Lake. Very, very interesting concept and probably a worthy potential for mitigation project.
The fact that they made us put, wipe that water through Rawlins. Last time I remember a flow, a flood, 60 years ago, it wiped out, wiped out a red corner off of Jackson Street, wiped out the bridge on Washington. Remained the people from being able to come notice of the fact. It was quite a bit, but that was about 60 years ago. I bet I was in my teens.
I was just going to ask the question. When the last time that flooded? And you're saying about 60 years ago?
About 60 years ago.
Do we have on record of an actual flood taking effect? It's on record other than just somebody's memory?
There are documented instances of flooding not specific to Sugar Creek that are codified and included in the Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Sugar Creek overflowed, it overflowed.
And I'm quite, I'm quite sure that it did.
The bridges that we had, they were wooden bridges. They're the bridges out.
But that was before we had the, the water, the pipe there now?
Oh, yes.
See, and that's what, that's what I wonder.
It's still over the creek.
You know, we're going to all this, and yet if you look at that map, the map is like, you know, you got the creek, and it is so wide out there. I personally feel it's such an overkill. If we go back, just data, has it ever been flooded to that extreme clear back to 1860s? I doubt it. You know, anything and everything can happen. There's no question to that.
Yes, sir.
But I just feel that this thing is just way bigger than it needs to be.
Well, and that's not a, that's not an uncommon observation, sir. And that with hydrologists and hydraulic engineers debate this same subject quite, quite often. Federal Emergency Management Agency uses a specified standard. It's not willy-nilly. It is a quality-controlled, independently peer-reviewed science it uses to develop. What most, what most folks don't understand, and it's a, it's a learning point in it, is that the order of magnitude that Congress set the Standards Act for this are the 1% chance event. That is a very large flood. But they do occur, and they do occur in Wyoming. 2015, in Lusk, up above Mannville, seven inches of rain in four hours on the 4th of June. Niagara Creek, excuse me, Niagara River. It's normally about this wide from here to that wall. Goes to about 200 yards wide. Floods downtown. Documented history said similar-like floods before the built environment, before construction of a lot of things, 1920s. People had seen that. But when you talk about a recurrence interval of that in observed period, anybody that, most of the folks that were living had never seen anything like that in Lusk. But the historical record showed it, and that's part of the observed record. And I guess I'll use a little personal story maybe to help the understanding between what's observed and what can be probabilistic. Is that my family, dryland wheat farmers in West Texas, and there's only been two names on the deed of trust in Texas on the farm that I grew up on. This original settler and my family. Got continuity on that land since 1870s, mid-1870s, when it was patented. We had good knowledge, and we had a good understanding of what the Lidle Creek Basin would do and could do. And we'd seen it until October of 1981. And we got the flood of record. Now, probabilistic event in excess of a 500-year flood. Our normal creek, which the observed record says 200 yards wide max, was a half-mile wide running up, putting debris on the fourth wire of a barbed-wire fence. So the observed record for our farmstead radically changed. Somewhere between 100-year flood event is mapped on the FEMA maps in our community. It exceeded that. So the federal government, when they do flood mapping, is based upon a probabilistic standard and not a historical, observed standard or documented. It's like most risks. It's a low-probability event but of high impact and consequences. Now, when I do, because I always like to be able to discuss well with communities, when I go and do ground truthing, and I actually look at the terrain, okay? And I look at the drainage, and I look at Sugar Creek as an emergency preparedness specialist, that's a flood is actually at some point in time waiting to happen. This is not a flood insurance discussion, but it is a flood risk. And most likely, based upon what engineers say, is that the hydraulic modeling of the piping that exists there is inadequate to take a significant flood. And it will tell you, the flood insurance study and the hydrology will tell you specifically what the federal government used as a flow rate and for a rain event. And they don't use unrealistic rain events. Now, each person in here has their own personal history of what you have observed. I went through the 1985 flood in Cheyenne. That's six inches of rain in Cheyenne in three hours. That was hugely devastating. And that happened? It did, okay? And that's the, that is when you look in kind of to a risk idea and model, those kind of events actually do happen. Late June 2015, we're working the flood Lusk disaster, and Rock Springs gets hit, these were summer monsoon thunderstorms, by a huge, and I would, boy, if I were the mayor, elected officials, the floodplains in Rock Springs are extremely challenging. So these are difficult, challenging topics to, you know, to talk through and to understand. And I don't mean to sound like a preach, but I have learned over time. I take a different, I take a different perspective of flood risk and understanding and knowing in terrain. Because from a historical observed point is that it may have happened yesterday, or it may have happened 75 years ago. It's really, those historical points are really, in a sense, irrelevant because the risk actually is established by what is possible, not based upon what we have observed.
There's always risk. I mean, you know, walking across the street, falling down the stairs when you walk in here tonight, there's always a risk.
Yes, sir, there is.
So have you guys done a study on the pipes that are on Sugar Creek, the flow? How many gallon, or, yeah, how many inches of rain per hour is the max that those pipes could hold?
Well, I'll tell you what their analysis does. We can get that detailed level of information, but they have looked at it. From the information that the city has provided to the engineers, these are contracted engineers on FEMA that do this. They are civil engineers, hydrologists that model this, okay? They say, okay, their position is that if the piping is installed, can't handle the cubic feet a second flow that equates to, I believe, the 10-year event. Now, that is the event, that is the flood flow that is assigned. And there's a specific cubic feet per second that is assigned to that ten percent chance event in the probabilistic model that is used for Sugar Creek. Because with the information that the city provided, it says it's undersized to handle it. It may, in the observed record, sir, okay, day in and day out here in Rawlins, it probably handles the rain events that if you look at a recurrence interval of one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, and those will equate to so many inches in so much, or probably not in inches at all, but probably less than an inch of rain in part of the watershed. And what's really difficult with each and every rain event is that no two are the same. It doesn't fall in the same exact place. So from a drainage aspect, in the observed record for the last fifty-nine years, a rain event has not occurred that is sufficient. And since seventy-nine, which I understand that was when the piping was installed or at least upgraded there in Sugar Creek, you haven't seen an event that gets to the equivalent of the size of a ten year event. And that's what the, that's what the FEMA's engineers are saying.
I'm not saying the information is giving me wrong, but what I'm saying is that it waited so long that we got people north of Cedar Street. Good example that, uh, right in that flood plain that built their, their businesses, their homes. They have no knowledge of what now we're, it seems like to me this is a goldmine for the insurance company. Their, their eyes are that big. Come on, you know, let's force these people to, to provide us flood insurance because my God, I can sell, sell some insurance to them. That's what it looks like to me. That's the information I'm getting from the public.
Uh huh.
You know, they, they're looking at it and saying, what flood?
And that.
This, this country here is so dang dry. It's not, we've been here forever and it, nothing's ever happened. And now we're having to be forced into buying flood insurance.
Yeah, that's the thing. A lot of these people in that area are on fixed incomes.
Uh huh.
And this insurance is fairly expensive. And I just worry about how they're gonna be able to afford it.
Um, yes, sir. That is, that's extremely, that's extremely valid.
And they're gonna fall back, not fall back, but they're gonna look at the city. And that's what they're doing now is they're looking at us to, to help them fight for them, not have to do this. Yeah.
Go ahead, Louis.
Yeah, I want your, my, my first name, um, the pipe that goes through the creek where they would come out. Flow through the west end.
Yes.
One, one line. It's got some kind of, um, gate, right gate. They fall over on the left side of the, everything. If I think they got these buildings there with the, that element had its wet. But it's probably old black, probably there's water, long, it's the one that provided the, the, uh, say the west, uh, normally have a floodgate. There was the old thing that marked it. I don't know if that thing worked or not. Those floodgates, that would be all the way up, the top of the water coming out. Actually, it's letting this part of town.
So basically what you're saying, Louis, is there, there's some floodgates on the west end of town that if they were shut, it possibly stopped a flood from happening through that portion of the town?
Yeah, but plus also take a look at adding enough floodgates on the other side of the interstate for the planters that are checking for any plants. But he's got a big old building there that was old black, probably did a lot of damage. That's the, yeah, I'm gonna give it a home, high enough. Where it wouldn't, uh, it couldn't get home. If it overflowed, you'd probably go on another way. But I'm saying there's fire station two, that open slot over there. A record of cattle were, uh, flood.
Yeah, I think, I think you're right there, fire station number two. Once it comes out there, it's pretty much open into the crowds there and then just on out it goes. So I don't think there'd be any effect there. Or risk.
The water in the three keepers, it's, it's, well, yeah. If that ten year event happened. With that, it's all, uh, slow.
Does that make sense?
Um, yes, sir. And I, I, I live and work in this world daily and to, uh, and to understand it. And it gets back to master drains plans, stormwater runoff, floodplains. And then, then now, now we've jumped way to this detailed type of, of mapping. The way I see the, the issue facing the community is that you're in the National Flood Insurance Program. The, the community, every community always has to make a decision to remain in the program or to exit the program. There are some challenges with exiting the program. As with anything, there are some consequences for disaster aid. And we can talk to that. I've got tons of fact sheets. That's probably a two hour discussion in and of itself. But to understand that there are consequences to exiting the program. Coming up in January is the official appeal period to where the adjudicated process, just as some kind of reminders of the milestones that were laid out in the community officials meeting in August that were laid out. The federal government cannot do this without a due process to a community. Now, there's lots of nuances and challenges. And I've worked in this program for fourteen years. And I've never seen a Wyoming community file a formal appeal for a flood map. Okay, for a flood map change. That can be a very detailed and it can be a very, very costly process. Keeping in mind that the federal government has invested several hundred thousand dollars into this project already. And they have a quality control, peer reviewed, to the published federal government standards to make a flood map. And that's what gives Rawlins the current flood map that's on the preliminary. So, um, I, my main goal is to make sure that elected officials and professional and staff of the communities are fully informed, good, bad, and ugly. Okay? And I'll focus on the good. Because of sheet flow in my community in Cheyenne, I personally, for that one point eight inches of rain in twenty minutes that I got, I carry a flood insurance policy on my place because I, as a property owner, cannot control the city of Cheyenne and Laramie County's land use development. Nor can I significantly influence the public works department in the city of Cheyenne to properly maintain the detention pond that is above mine and my next door's neighbor's property where we share a couple of between the two. So Kim and Colette Johnson reconciled the risk. I can't structurally control that flood risk because of that one point eight inches of rain. My neighbor got about forty thousand dollars worth of damage to his house. We're not in the flood plain. We're not in the creek. Lord, you know? And, and, and he was able to recover based upon charitable aid because I don't think he carried any flood insurance on his place. And he probably wouldn't have because he thought I'm high and dry. So that's the good part of the program. Because when we talk about recovering from a disaster and a flood disaster in particular, like in Lusk or anywhere else in Wyoming, you're pretty much on your own pretty quick unless it meets a criteria for a federally declared disaster. Right? Otherwise, it's out of your pocketbook. Probably about seven million dollars worth of damage in, um, to folks in Lusk. Most of that was in small business administration loans to people to recover. They had to be capable of recovering. Federal disaster aid averaged in Lusk, the aid that went to them was about seven thousand dollars.
So what's the typical or average cost for insurance? If somebody has a, a piece of property that's valued at fifty to a hundred thousand and on up, I mean?
What will actually happen, sir, when these maps go, these maps go effective and you live down in Sugar Creek in mapped area or any blue area to it? And your lender does the review and determination and says that, yes, you're now in the flood plain. You have to carry insurance. What will it look like then? Here's what happens for the first five years of that. The federal government, you used to have to go in super deep. And with legislation in twenty sixteen, the federal government moderated that to what is called newly mapped. You start at about five hundred and eighty dollars a year. That's what the current schedule will say. In each subsequent years required, it will go up eighteen percent each year. Until for the type and structure of houses you have, it goes to what is called the standard X rate. And this is the class of policies that are for people that are going into the flood plain based upon a mapping, uh, change. It's unique, it's specially tailored to lessen the financial strain on somebody. Because under the old sketches prior to twenty fourteen, or twelve and fourteen, now let's go back to the mid two thousands, you would have gone from zero to possibly twenty five hundred a year. In many instances, based upon the risk level and how deep the flood is and how much risk is on your individual structure. In this case, we're talking to residents of your home. And basically, there's a lot of nuances in how a flood policy is underwritten. Has to do with elevation, does it have a basement, does it have crawl space? Where's the first floor? There's a whole bunch of those factors that go into it. But newly mapped, and that's a specific terminology that we use. And I've got some detailed fact sheets for Danielle. We've got a ton of extra information, you know, that we're not even touching, they're just hopping. But it will start roughly at about five hundred and eighty a year. And it goes up eighteen percent a year for the first five years. So you do the math pretty quick. And after about five years, you're gonna get to probably close to that two thousand dollar.
Now, this is only required if their house is currently financed or they're gonna purchase a house to finance.
Yes, sir. Can they get into it? Absolutely.
If they own their home, then they don't have to have insurance. It's their own risk.
We don't have to have, uh, property casualty insurance if you own your home free and clear. You don't, they're not, there's no forced placement of flood insurance for somebody that has a mortgage free warranty here in the state.
It's just gonna affect the people that are currently financed or gonna be purchasing and financing.
Here's a little, a little nuance. If you take out HELOC, Home Equity Line of Credit, you'll, you'll be required to carry that because you're using the.
Federal.
Um, structure. Now, here's, here's what happens. Here's a little finer point nuance. I own my house free and clear and I go to take a mortgage out on it. I mean, let's say, you know, old folks, uh, you know.
Reverse mortgage?
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Since I turned sixty, all sorts of things happen. The, uh, yeah, like a reverse mortgage, that instrument, okay? You're going to have to, you're gonna cross the tripwire for flood insurance. Okay? Because you're borrowing money from any time it's a refinance, a reverse mortgage, first mortgage, HELOC, any type of those type of things. The informed, um, property owner needs to understand that there may be flood insurance necessary if that home is in a special flood. And that happens quite often. People back into it. And usually the strength of the title company that they're using to do that transaction and that lender is going to do that check. Mortgage portfolios. Here's, here's another type of thing that will happen when a map goes effective in a community. The federal legislation tells regulated lenders that you've got ninety days to check your portfolios of loans. That they are required to check and to do determination. And if they have a property, excuse me, the structure, the house, because we don't insure land in this program, it's only the structures, then those, uh, lenders will notify you and you'll have forty-five days to place flood insurance. And if a resident does not, if a resident does not heed the advice or requirement that the lender is leading to them, at that forty-five day point, the lender will force place, just like they do property and casualty insurance, fire insurance, all the perils, they will force place that. And then they will just do a payment because they will take the loans for escrow to buy the flood insurance policy.
It's just gonna be a higher rate than what's?
And it can be, sir. My personal experience in this program is that when a lender needs to go into the flood insurance market and get a policy quickly, like in a matter of hours, well, that's gonna be way more expensive than if the borrower took their time to consult with their licensed agent and get a properly applied for and under the policy that is accurate.
Now, this is a very easy decision thing. You took the people along the Sugar Creek area, lived there for many, many years. Chances are they would tell me, stay out of the flood plain. Don't, don't agree with it. Because if they had a flood there, you'd just wipe them out, period. Even if they had insurance, it wouldn't really help them. It would wipe their house. They'd have to rebuild it. It's been a costly.
The insurance business helped you to pay for that, we know.
Yeah.
I mean, do they just have two hundred thousand dollars cash to go rebuild their house? No big deal?
Well, but what I'm saying is if you have, you have people that have houses that are hundred and fifty thousand, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, houses, chances are they would want an insurance to protect their investment. See what I'm saying?
Yes, sir. Very right.
This really helps, helps those that have that kind of investment. Those that don't have that investment, it ain't gonna help them a lot.
Well, and I, uh, I, I understand what you're saying, sir, that the, uh, the difference in range and spectrum of the habitable structures, let's say that are in a, a flood plain can range from multimillion dollar homes in, uh, Jackson that sell for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in Cheyenne. Or, uh, you know, those, those folks have a tremendous amount of value at risk versus someone who may own a older mobile home that is on a lot, but unlikely that they would have that mobile home mortgage. Now, in disaster recovery, where the real heartbreak comes from is that when I wanted to flood in Lusk, right, just understanding and visiting with floods, you know? Nobody died in that flood, but getting real close. And the other aspect of it, there were a hundred homes that were damaged in Lusk. Because I did the damage assessment with the team from the Small Business Administration, county and town officials and the Federal Emergency Management, which you see me. I, I walked into about a hundred homes. I walked into about 100 homes there and onto their property and did it. 10 of them were destroyed. A couple of them, there was no piece or part ever found of that. And a real heartbreaker here to recovery for those that lost an order of magnitude in that flood along the Nydrewa River, which is normally just a little sleepy river there, pretty intermittent for most of the year, is that everything that they had was wiped out. I only have evidence of one private insurance policy that had been placed upon a structure that was outside of the floodplain. No one in Lusk, in the town of Lusk, had an insurance, flood insurance policy. When you're out at the fairgrounds visiting with folks, you've got 300 people, you know, on a hot June afternoon, you know, their town and their livelihood has been devastated. And I'm not necessarily making an emotional appeal. I am just relating to you real life stories of the heartbreak that you could see. Businesses downtown that had no insurance, no flood insurance, no government, they could go on and on. They were totally devastated. Businesses are wiped out. They're not even there. So that gets back to the, the whole conversation always comes back to a flood risk and knowing what the detail is of the risk and how do you manage risk? And one of the key things that Dylan and Andy all touched on a little bit is like, well, what can you do? And I want to leave this idea with you that as part of a comprehensive plan for the town of Rawlins, there are federal funds because you are a participative community in it for mitigation projects. In your current mitigation plan, there are mentions of flood risk reduction projects that you've got in the plan that the staff and the council developed this input to the plan. With every theme of required plan, there's always a nexus to identify realistic capital projects that can be used. There's money out there for planning or drainage plans. Just to understand, Larrabee County and the city of Chinatown have grants that are managed through our office to develop master drainage plans. Mitigation planning is a long haul. It's a multi-year event. It's challenging. It will not be the panacea to mitigate the difficulties and challenges faced by some residents financially to pay for flood insurance by the option of insurance. That's just real clear. But however, however, the big caveat circling back to the risk thing is how do the folks, there is flood risk in Sugar Creek. I understand it's a debatable point, it's an order of magnitude. But there is risk downstream from that old detention into the area. How deep, how big, how severe? We touched on that a little bit tonight. But in the flood risk discussion is how does a person recover if their home is flooded? You either write a check, and most Wyoming flood events are non-declared disasters. There is not a state program that gives money to individuals. It is only in one across the threshold into very large events like the Lusk event, qualifying event. But most flood damage events in Wyoming are either single homes or probably less than a dozen of homes are damaged in flash flood event. Whether that is in a mapped floodplain or not, it's in a natural floodplain or drainage or it's kind of like my neighbor that comes sheet flowed off of the hill. He recovered by his own personal resources and a wonderful charity that was supported by anybody in this church. And they helped him recover. And that was fantastic. He had a safety net there. But how do community members, how do you recover from risk that you can't control or is not mitigated? And by just staring disaster in the face? Or do you ration it and reason it? These are real tough subjects in our culture today because we have very, very strong arguments about health insurance. Legislature settled the thing about liability insurance for automobile, other than liability coverage, you own your own to either absorb that cost or not. So there are parallel discussions to this. But as I find as I travel the state, usually flood risk because of the perception that it doesn't occur in our state, and it really and truly does, our agency has spent more in flood response in the 15 years that I've been there than it has on anything else. We have spent in response, in flood fighting, in preparation, we have spent more than $1 million in Saratoga since 2010. I've responded to floods in 2010, 14, 16, 17, and 19, you know, in Saratoga. I'm really, really thankful that you folks haven't experienced a bad flash flood, you know, here in Rawlins. I'm not trying to talk you into one thing and another. It's just like I trade in facts and observations. And, you know, my goal is to help the town work and the professional staff to work through this. I think that this flood insurance program can provide benefit. There are four policyholders in town that have elected, can disclose where they are to privacy information. But there's four folks that have decided on their own, making a decision that they do have an unmitigated risk and they give the policy, it's called preferred risk, the maximum coverage, they pay about $500 a year, $250,000 in insurance, $100,000 in confidence.
Well, I think, you know, everybody has that opportunity, you know, to get it themselves if they feel it's a need. And what we struggle with is, you know, at the 580, the 18% increase for five years, you're talking $2,500 a year, which on a homeowner making a mortgage payment, that's about $200 plus more a month to his mortgage payment, which most people, when they get a mortgage, they're pretty tight. You know, we're not in the banana belt here of money. So when they have a mortgage payment of 800 a month, ends meet, they're tight making that 800 a month. Now, by us agreeing to this and moving forward, we're just going to add another $200 a month to them. And then that's tough. That's tough to sit here and be the ones that have to make that decision on so many people's lives.
Yes, sir. I understand. The only way that I can mitigate that concern is to, I believe that the science behind it also tells me that the risk along Sugar Creek is real. Again, we can argue those orders of magnitude relate that. However, the role and option that is available to the city of Rawlins is to understanding better what your flood risk is within the city of Rawlins and to potentially to invest and to mitigate, to upsize, to understand Sugar Creek, to apply for planning grants and/or eventually construction grants. There are follow-on to a planning grant that can be used to comprehensively manage flood risk in the city of Rawlins. Because I'm guessing that you've got drainage issues that potentially storm. I know of no Wyoming community that has the storm water capacity that it would like to have or that it does it extremely well. So that aspect. It is an interesting combination of forces between private property owners, the political subdivision of the city and of the county, and then the entrance into the program.
This is going to affect construction. It's going to affect new housing in the community. People wanting to come in and buy properties to build on. I'm going to have to carry some kind of an insurance on that. That's how insurance is going to be. The price of that house is going to go.
Well, and the city of Rawlins will have to regulate. Here's something that, kind of in my analysis that I look at, let's take Sugar Creek, okay? Sugar Creek, okay, in Kim's viewpoint, as an analyst and as a professional for flood risk there. And it's partially mitigated by the piping, but it can't withstand, you know, the storm. Now, to manage that floodplain, that floodplain, that natural floodplain that has existed there, has existed since early in creation, it's been there, it's been built in, and it's been developed. It's part of the built environment. It's like Cherry Creek in Denver. It was built on the inverse original plat of the town, it was just on the banks of Cherry Creek, and I think in 1864, they all got washed away. Well, we understand a lot more about flood risk today, but to, for development, these are the tough discussions in development is to, and your, and every community is a little bit different on land use development. It's where you allow development to be done and by building code, how you do develop that in certain risk areas. In Wyoming, we have great concern with the wildland fire interface. We also have it with flood. We have it with avalanche zones in the western part of state.
Well, I think that all makes sense, but that area is already developed. You know, that's the thing, you know?
And yes, sir. And I kind of think that it's a little bit of a, and I don't mean to use hyperbole to do it, but it's a little bit of a risk area that's waiting for something bad to happen. And I'm understanding, but Danielle has a question out there.
Yeah, I actually have a two-part question.
Okay.
So you talked about the insurance a little bit, and I just want to clarify that if somebody, and I guess I want to make sure, maybe you can explain this, but if somebody owns a $200,000 home, I think was an example given by council, but they only owe $50,000 on their mortgage, that's the only coverage they're going to have unless they purchase additional, correct? So it's not going to fully cover them. I guess, will you talk about what the insurance covers a little bit? And then the second part to that, my question is, if we choose not to participate in the program, that flood map is already out there and federally backed mortgages could still require them to purchase it, correct?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I'll leave that. Yeah, I think there's about six or seven questions in that one.
Sorry.
That's good. So, no, no, it's very important, okay? I will talk about what the federal law requires, okay? The federal regulators are going to require that lender to cover and ensure the outstanding balance of the loan. That's what they're required to do.
So what you're saying with that is if the original loan was 200,000, if they only owed 30,000 left on the home, they'd only have to have insurance for that remainder 30,000?
The federal government is going to look to see that that lender covers that 30,000 portion of the loan. That's what the law requires. A lender has a prerogative, okay, to levy insurance requirements on that potentially above and beyond. And that's not, that's not regulated. That's their prerogative as a lender to do that. And I won't speak to that. I'll speak to what is required that the federal government's regulatory body requires lenders. And when they inspect, when the federal government banking and loaning on its lenders, that's what they're looking for is the coverage. So it may be worth 250,000. You may only owe 100,000 on it. And the minimum amount of flood insurance would cover the 100,000 portion of it. So your amount may not have to be the full amount. We do not intervene in that lender borrower relationship as to what is required.
We have a question out there for you. Paul, do you have that?
So if they don't cover but the 100,000 and you wipe out a $250,000 home, who's covering the other 150,000?
The property owner is.
So there's no real value to the property owner? If you wipe out a house, the whole house is gone. The only covered part by your insurance is the part that's the 100,000.
And here's the, here's the, here's the part to that. Kind of these, these are always cascading questions, okay? Let's take a $200,000 house. We've got $100,000 mortgage on it. It's in the floodplain. I'm required to carry insurance on $100,000. Okay, I get wiped out by a flood. There's a $100,000 payment. That $100,000 goes to the lender, okay? And then you're saddled with no home and you get to rebuild from that. From scratch, you have, you're out everything, your asset, your asset in a flood. And this happens all the time in disasters, you know? Whether it's uninsured disasters or not. You know, the big Roosevelt Fire up above Pinedale here a couple of years ago, 64 residential structures burned down. 16 of those were primary residences that were underinsured or completely uninsured. So, boy, that's, you got a real bad.
I mean, people battle insurance daily just for having the normal insurance on their home when a fire happens or just a normal incident. It battles as it is, trying to get full coverage to get everything.
Oh, you bet, you bet. Now, there's a detailed document in the summary of coverage. Keep in mind in the concept, flood insurance is one of the most riskiest pools of insurance, from an actuarial with a coverage base. It's a kind of a high incident, 10 times higher for flood damage than for burning down your house when you try to aggregate it as a group to compare apples to apples. It's a pretty risky insurance. That's why the private insurance market is not fully developed for flood insurance because it's a high loss type of insurance nationwide, and it's not a profitable line of insurance privately in Wyoming. There are certain aspects it is for commercial insurers, above and beyond secondary type of coverage. But to talk about many aspects of it are actual cash value, appreciated value. It's not a full replacement value policy. And we've got documents that, eight-page handout that will go into the summary of coverage. Just kind of keep it in mind, there's limited coverage in a basement. Things that you would typically find in a historic basement are covered, such as the freezer, furnace, the extreme TVs are not. Because the concept and what's a challenge here in Wyoming with the construction patterns that we have in Wyoming observed is that the big thing is to make a basement a finished living space. And historically, a basement is not finished living space. It's placed for either a coal oil, excuse me, an oil furnace or a coal-fired furnace or wood furnace. It's kind of like an industrial area. So things in this program, things like furnaces and hot water heaters and freezers and food in the freezer and things like that. and food in the freezer and things like that, and the structural aspects of it are covered. Now, one caveat that I would like to leave the professional staff and the council with an understanding that in a true risk environment for flood, the most at-risk thing is not your superstructure and your contents. It's your foundation. That's a primary thing that you're insuring. It doesn't, even in this program, it doesn't get talked about. That's what's at risk of my house. I'm not terribly concerned about it filling up with water. I'm terribly concerned about overlying huge load and damaging stem wall foundation and eroding it. And then my superstructure on top of that stem wall is worthless if it is damaged. So that probably folks' understanding what's really being protected most in flood insurance policy is the foundation. So just take it there. And you're going to have to prompt me again.
If we elect to not be a participating community, can federally backed mortgage companies still require, because the map is out there?
They have, lenders have several options in a non-participating community. And this happens currently here in Wyoming because there are sanctioned communities that are actually mapped in the flood insurance program, but they are non-participating communities. A lender, okay, still may lend in those areas, such as if, let's say hypothetically, so we kind of be realistic here, let's say that Rawlins didn't participate in the program and has never participated in the program. And this mapping project comes along, and because they map it on a county-wide basis, you get floodplain. And, and that is the federal government's domain in flood mapping. Whether residents and local governments, the state governments like it or not, the federal government has that authority to do flood mapping without the consent of the community. That's just the way the law is written. But lenders can make those loans. However, in observation, in reality, what I observe is that in a number of instances, they may elect an option, they might forego it. It gets to be upon their decision of risk pool. They may negotiate a higher above wanted rate to protect their investment. So the lender in that situation, lender has, is all of the leverage. And it's totally, it would be totally up to them. They are not prohibited to make loans in those areas. But you will find, and what I find in observation, is that they will either make it. And the best way to do it is to ask a local lender what their corporate policies would be. I found in observation that some do. I've seen higher rates charged on the refinance of a modular home to be several percentage points higher. I've seen that occur. So there's, there's any kind of number of nuances. But the actual best answer would have to be from that specific lending institution because you'll find some variability between institutions. That's my observation. There's not been a detailed peer review master study that's been done on that subject. And that's what can happen, and that's what latitude that lender has, so.
My understanding that the county, the county, they're involved in this decision-making too. Is that right?
That is correct.
The municipality decides no, the county decides we want to be involved. We're part of the county. We're still, this municipality is still part of the county. What happens there?
A great question, sir. Perfect. The city of Rawlins' participation is mutually exclusive from the unincorporated portion of the county. The county's jurisdiction are in the unincorporated areas within Carlin County. It's where they, the flood insurance program, the county's participation, it covers unincorporated Carlin County. And municipalities are standalone, mutually exclusive. So Rawlins, Riverside, Saratoga, on and on, Riverside, they all participate. Bax participates, but Encampment doesn't. So you can't buy a flood insurance policy in Encampment, but step across municipal line into unincorporated Carlin County, and you can, so.
So every municipality could be, could not be part of it, but the county itself could outside of each municipality?
Yes, sir. Any kind of combination there are. I live in Larrabee County. The county participates. All the cities except municipalities participate, except the town of Alvin. Alvin is a non-participating island in the otherwise seat of that. The decisions that are made in the city of Rawlins are mutually exclusive by those floodplain management and permitting decisions that are made by Carlin County. It's Carlin County Planning, Sid Fox used to head it up since, you know, he's retired. And Marlon Johnson is the new county planner. He is the floodplain administrator on behalf of the commissioner of Carlin County.
And then, kind of going back to this, the pipe and the Sugar Creek thing which goes before my day, and I'm admittedly a little clueless here. Do we have the data on what that would accommodate versus what they're saying that they would need? I mean, is it feasible to put a bigger pipe or a second pipe or do some more mitigation? You know, one of the, one of the things was, hey, this seems like a big area. If the second pipe, could that bring the area to a smaller?
Yes, sir.
I mean, is there's some room in there?
Uh, yes, sir. There is. Now, to answer specifically what's there, what is exists, we have to rely on, and when we negotiate this, when the feds, the state, and the local government's talking about this, we have to rely on the city of Rawlins to tell us what are the as-built conditions there. Now, in order to mitigate it, there are a number of places in Wyoming where the complete 100-year floodplain, okay, the 100-year event, the 1% chance event recurrence interval is totally contained in the current effective model for the rainfall model for the watershed to that thousands, usually in the thousands of cubic feet per second, are either contained in a channel that has been dug and a construction project, a mitigation project that has been done to reduce that water. It may be a new channel. It may be a channel and a series of detention ponds to slow it down. Because when floodwaters move, they accumulate. That flood is not constant, and we all know this. But the storm runoff, it's not constant. It like gathers and it builds, and then it's a surge, we call it. Well, in modeling, it's called the peak discharge, the maximum flow that's going to be through there. And it can be high. The city of Cheyenne, between 2006 and '10, did a series of multimillion-dollar projects where FEMA paid 75% of cost, the capital improvement projects. And they shrunk the floodplains in several locations in the city of Cheyenne and took hundreds, hundreds of homes out of the regulatory. And we're talking, these are, these are pipes that are 96 inches in diameter. Okay, that's a big thing.
Sure. So what you're saying then?
Those are, those are, those are big pipes. And that's a, that's a large, I would use probably more colorful language in a different setting, but that's a large, that's a large amount of water when you have 496 inches. They're taking dry creek, and they rechanalized it. They moved the floodplain completely in a project that FEMA, I helped manage that project through that, pardon? Those are the kinds of conceptual things, so.
So what you're saying, it's possible?
It's possible.
To where we could put in larger pipes over there and completely, and remove ourselves from the floodplain over there if the pipes were big enough?
Yes, sir. And it may, it may kind of be, it'd be, in an engineering model, to tell you what that looks like.
Right, right.
But communities in Wyoming do this constantly. Like Buffalo just built a huge detention.
And there's the possibility to get monies from FEMA?
There is. There are, and what a wonderful segue, I just want to, there are two acronyms that I would ask that the city of Rawlins really requires. One of them is called BRIC. There's a new program by FEMA. It's extremely lucrative compared to their high-bound old programs. And watch this on streaming or on tape. I, I've worked these projects. I, I'm actually personally excited about BRIC. It's going to do some of the best work in the United States that's ever been done because some of the right thinkers have developed a program. But it's called Building Resilient Infrastructure Communities. And it replaces some of the historical programs. There's another one. There are basically two mitigation programs in the FEMA compendium nowadays. It's called BRIC and FMA. FMA is a legacy program that's been around a long time. It's flood mitigation assistance. The projects such as these can be done. And I see it happen. There is evidence, proven evidence, that it's a challenging multi-year planning event, but it is possible, engineering-wise, to significantly reduce or combine the effects of any floodplain as that is currently modeled. Because you basically, you build a new creek. You change the, you change the dynamic. You understand what that flood flow is. You calculate it and to tell, and in the flood insurance study, it'll tell you now feasibility in engineering and design and concept. I've talked in grant management and concepts. Yes, it can be, it can be mitigated. And I think that is one of the positives that can be taken out of a discussion like this is to make aware for the legislative and administrative and executive body, what the city of Rawlins, to understand that your flood risk, all your flood risk can be part of that, the funding for it. Because here's what I kind of talk with communities. You take your, many of your capital, we probably got a list of public works, capital projects. When you flip a capital improvement project over on the other side, there's usually, it's fixing something. It is mitigating something. There are many instances that existing projects or capital improvements in a community are a lot of times eligible FEMA mitigation projects. Sometimes they have to be tweaked, okay? Now, it's not an easy lift. It's a detailed and complicated over. But I have seen the city of Cheyenne take hundreds of homes out of the floodplain in the last decade by using these programs. It really truly helps people. It improves their property values because the flood is contained. It preserves life because you don't have the flash flood roaring down the street anymore. And it protects their property. And it's a good.
Should we rather eliminate the event rather than just paying more, right? I mean, turn by deal?
Yes, sir. And because of how insurance, insurance covers a gap until you can mitigate the risk. Until Kim and Colette, my wife and I, get the city of Cheyenne to put in bigger pipes and do a bigger things, I've still got a problem in my backyard. And that might be decades, and it might never be fixed. So I hedge that risk with insurance. But the role government has in it, because you're the land use development authority and the rightful entity for public safety, these mitigation projects can do a whole lot of good to help burn down.
So do we have all that data then? I mean, is that?
If you don't, you can get there.
I do have the information on the grant. You previously, we're both of them previously provided that to us in a meeting. So I wrote that down, and I remembered the BRIC because it just.
Well, I mean, but as far as like having that, because the last I remembered, we were still talking about the pipe. So do we have the, what the, what that pipe would allow versus what we need?
So I did get some information from FEMA that I sent out, but I, so I, we did provide them information. We have the condition of all of the pipes over there. We have two 54-inch pipes. So we did provide all of that. And they did come back with some different charts and information that honestly, I have a really hard time understanding. It's, a lot of it doesn't make sense to me. But they did say it wouldn't comply in that. So we did talk about at one point trying to do a mitigation project, and I did learn about these grants. So I have that. But one of the things, when we met with you guys the last time that we presented, is that we really felt that our direction had changed, and we need to get an engineer on board to help us with these things and to talk to the modelers with FEMA and to figure out, make sure they have a good understanding of our floodplain so that we could evaluate what mitigation project would be sufficient enough to mitigate that. Because what we didn't want to happen is that we say, oh, well, let's just upsize our pipe, and then FEMA comes back and says, well, that's still not.
We still don't care, right? Yeah, I agree.
So that was the route staff, after the last work session with you guys was going, with getting an engineer on board. We actually have a committee with staff that's been kind of working on this. We have the building department. We have a utilities employee, the attorney, myself, Myra, and Sean, just to help us. I just, I wanted Kim to come talk to you guys before we really jumped into all of that to make sure that after you guys got more information from him, that we didn't decide that we wanted to go a different route or do something different. But we're ready.
I don't think there's a different route to take. I think we need to look at the feasibility of what we can do to.
Right. Yeah, and one of.
Forward and.
You just give like a logical starting point, trying to, that could just solve the problem.
Right. I mean, if there's grants and so forth, where we could go in there and put in bigger pipes or do something that's going to alleviate us from having to be in that floodplain, which is a benefit to all the homeowners and property owners that live in that area.
Yeah. I did have one question though that I thought of today when you were talking about that. Well, can those grants help cover any of those engineering costs or not? It would just be for the actual project itself?
This gets pretty, this gets pretty detailed, and I want to be careful of how I say this so that you're not misled. I've worked with a whole lot of grants over the years in the, in the state. The ones from FEMA are, they do some wonderful work, and the state has benefited tremendously from them. But they are complex and complicated. Part of it when pursuing a, in the context of it, what we call the pre-award cost for a project can be captured. Now, sometimes there's a little bit of risk involved with doing the advance work and not getting a grant. Sometimes that, just in that concept, that sometimes, sometimes happens. However, under BRIC, this is the first year for the BRIC cycle, and they, and they're also talking about FMA, that it has certain planning grants, that planning grants can be accepted and get applications of projects ready to compete in these grant award cycles because they are competitive based upon merit. They aren't a multimillion-dollar bucket of money that we get to decide that the state, which one gets it. There's, there's competitive, and there's, it's usually a pretty detailed process. So the, I would like to answer that question by saying, under BRIC and also flood mitigation assistance, there are planning grants that, the ones that I've seen done that like Larrabee County and the city of Cheyenne are doing to do enhancement. to do enhancements to their drainage and to get, get a better understanding. These planning grants can be used to do the initial scoping. And a lot of times about, let's say like 30% design of a project so that you're going to know if it, if the project, there's always an investment, see if a project is cost-effective and it has merit. And the benefit cost analysis has to be greater than one, meaning that you can't spend a dollar to fix a 75 cent problem. It's got to be a dollar and a penny problem to spend a dollar to qualify for it. And that sometimes in itself is a, is a, is a challenge. But just kind of gut feel, when you kind of size things up, these grants and what my experience tells me is that it would be worthwhile to pursue a mitigation action potentially for Sugar Creek and also any other flooding things. It can be more comprehensive. It can include Sugar Creek. It can be bigger. If you've got other drainage, bad spots in town, storms who are going to be upgrades. That's what these things are designed for. And I want to be real careful in not trying to oversell it, okay? Nor undersell it. I'm trying to hit the sweet spot when we're talking about these grants, but it's worthwhile. However, it does, in my experience, okay, it would be extremely hard without a good civil engineer that's a good grasp in hydrology and hydraulics to do the work and the analysis to get you to an effective grant application. So, and many times that's a big leap for it. But a planning grant under these can pay to, it would be the sponsor, it would be the city of Rawlins. And then under these grants, the work can be subbed out to qualify. You've got a procurement, much like anything else, you've got procurement scheduling rules to follow to competitively mitigate to affirm, to do the work. And just to kind of get an idea of these grants, these planning grants are usually like in the hundreds and thousands of dollars to do. Because these projects are going to be to repipe a place like Sugar Creek just to get you kind of in the ballpark. That's going to be in the millions. So, and there would be a cost share.
I was just going to say, is there a match? Do you know what the match is on those grants?
Usually 25% match. And you can't use other federal funds to match.
Is the town of Sinclair is eight? Do you have any same problem?
No, we're not in a flood zone.
Well, they, it's interesting that you, that you mentioned that, sir. I made communication with them, but in this, in this round of mapping on the west side of Sinclair within their municipal boundary, there is a floodplain. There's nothing, there's nothing there. And it's a historic, kind of a ponding area. But they will get a floodplain out of this map. In the preliminaries, there are maps that show that. It's on the west end of town, outside of the, what I call the built environment, you know, where the, where the houses and the residential area stops. It's within their municipal boundaries.
But they're not participating?
They are not participating.
Are they, do you know if they're looking at joining? If you don't, it's okay.
No, that's just, that's just the point of communication between my office and the town of Sinclair. They are, I would say, I would classify them as neutral at the moment. So, they've historically not been a participant.
Is there a, so we're starting to get close on time here. So is there anybody sitting out there that has any other questions or anything that they want to get asked before we run out of time? No?
Real quick. So I'm kind of curious just about deadlines and different things. I know you mentioned January was the formal appeal to the floodplain. What about after that? What are the, what are the deadlines? We're looking at a decision.
Absolutely. The milestones, and I can, I can send some more information in writing back to Danielle to distribute to everyone on this. But here are the big milestones here. We are post-community official, release of preliminary maps, but we are pre-appeal. The appeal period will be announced by FEMA in newspaper publications. That will become effective. That is scheduled right now for January time three. The appeal period will run for, I'm looking for ninety days for comment. And then there's always a period of time to adjust and answer comments and appeals. We're actually in that, still in that comment because comment is different than a legal appeal. But then they will resolve all questions in comments county-wide. This could include the names incorrect, maybe in that boundary, small deficiencies such as that, then are corrected. And then they will set what is called a letter of final determination. And this will be a formal letter that will come to Mayor Fugelsohn in his position as the mayor. And it basically says that the appeal period has been completed and all issues with the map are finalized. And it sets then the six-month adoption period. And then that adoption period, based upon what we're looking at right now on the schedule, that final adoption date will be calendar year 22. It's going to take us all of 21 to get through the appeal process and finalization. Map thinking goes at glacial speed, which is actually good. It's actually good. It's just slow. But there will be that six-month appeal, excuse me, six-month adoption period. And at that time, and we didn't really discuss this a whole lot here, but that is when the city of Rawlins will adopt the appropriate level of regulations to the map that you have. It's going to go effective. So, levels of regulations are tied to the detail of the map. I actually brought with me, but also provided to Danielle, what this body of language looks like. It has options in it that you can pick and choose to, if you wish to regulate to a higher standard. And in that six-month window, is the community will do the finalization. And because of statute here in Wyoming, you have to do rereadings of the city ordinance. And then that has to be adopted by the end of the letter of final determination period. It will be adopted at that date. If the town, if the city of Rawlins does not adopt the map by the time date that is established in the letter of final determination, you will be suspended from the program. Suspension in the program is a temporary condition. If you pass it, you can get back in. If the community fails to adopt the map, then they will move to suspension. And then they will move to sanctioning that insurance out of the program. And any existing policies cannot be renewed at the time of their expiration. Lots of legal, legal contractual kinds of things there that has to do with the insurance policies. But then you would move into sanctioned status community. That means that flood insurance is no longer available for sale. And that you don't have to regulate the floodplain, but you still have a map. And lenders look at that. So that's the definition of sanctioned community. If a community such as XYZ community is not participating, they get map and they remain non-participating. They were sanctioned before, they're still sanctioned after. So the status hasn't changed. But they now have a map floodplain that they didn't have before. And I'd be glad to come back and visit more and work closely with staff. We're going to be on a continued 18-month journey involvement, I will, with the community, with the council, which you're a good discretion, sir, and also with the professional staff that does all the work, you know, behind all of this.
Go ahead.
The council, three regions of ordinance. Once we get the ordinance into its final shape, the state comments on that ordinance and the federal government representatives of FEMA in Denver approve. So, they say you get the final name line for the compliance aspects, the ordinance that you would use to make it.
Okay.
And just a quick clarification. Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Louis.
Yeah, I was just wondering, is there any type of possibility of grandfathered clauses?
I'm sorry to answer your question of a grandfather in, because you didn't have any mapped areas before, the grandfathering posi, the grandfathering provisions or flood insurance policies wouldn't be applicable in Rawlins. Okay, I'm not sure if I completely understood your question.
1974, that was.
Well, you came into the program in 1974. Now, what will, what happens actually after this map goes effective? You have two classes of structures. You have those that are pre-mapped and then post-mapped. Post-mapped will apply to anything built after the date in calendar year 22 that these go effective. But for insurance rating, the classification of existing structures that are now captured into the floodplain, they're basically in a different long-term schedule. But then it defaults back to the newly mapped rate schedule.
Okay.
Oh, just, so just a real quick question is so if, if, let's say that we decided to explore this, the pipe and mitigating through that and we figure out, okay, well, we can put in bigger pipe and whatever. Is that appeals process? Is that when we would claim that that is our solution or would that get addressed?
No, sir. These are, these are, these are mutually exclusive. The track that you're on for the map is going, okay?
Okay, no, that's, I just, I just wanted to check.
Your proposed project would not be an appeal ground.
Okay, okay. That's just one more to mention.
Okay, that's a, that's a very good question, but it's not, no, the project is not.
Not how that works.
Would not post, a proposed project would not post on the effective date.
If there's no other questions for Kim, I just like to thank you for coming tonight. I hope we got some questions on our part answered that we can go back to the citizens' lift. And then hopefully we can make a determination on the direction we want to go.
No, definitely not be any more questions. We're totally good now.
Sir, we, I want to thank you so much for letting me come over here. This is a great opportunity. I don't always get this. So it's a, it's a great opportunity to talk and to visit. You have my card. You have my phone. You have my email. If you have a follow-up question after you've had some good nights of rest and trying to proctetane on these things and follow along, please, please share them with me. And I will, I'll bird dog me that answer.
Okay.
And I'll continue to work closely with your professional staff on a weekly basis. This is Sugar Creek thing is still alive, you know? In my books, it's not a holy shit piece necessarily as we talk and learn a little bit, a little bit more. I don't want to imply, you know, one decision or not. You know, it looks unfavorable from the town's perspective at this time based upon their technical analysis. You know, I respect that, but as a state guy, I also have my perspective on my questions.
Right.
I know I'm holding up the, the meeting, sir. So your rest of your evening. But once again, thank you so much for the very kind welcome and hospitality and an engaging conversation, sir.
All right. Thank you, Kim.
You bet. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Let's take a five minute.
Let's take a five minute.
All right, thank you guys all for coming tonight. We'll start out with the roll call.
Mayor Nicholson.
Here.
Vice Mayor Sanders.
Here.
Councilor Rogers.
Here.
Espinoza. Marquina.
Here.
Smith. Here.
Wells.
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum. We will start out with citizens' participation. And this is the time set aside for anybody in the audience to come up and speak about something that is not on the agenda for the night. Danielle?
Too much stuff here, sorry. I'd actually really like to invite recycle and landfill employees. So I have some really exciting news that I wanted to share with everybody. Interwest Paper presented a award to the City of Rawlins Recycle Center for being a responsible community partner by diverting a significant portion of their waste stream by recycling. So in two thousand nineteen, we recycled two hundred twenty-seven point six seven tons of recycled materials. This equals four hundred fifty-five thousand three hundred forty pounds, which equates to a cost savings for the citizens had they had to take it to the landfill of twenty-two thousand seven hundred sixty-seven dollars.
Nice.
According to a Yale study funded by EPA, the U.S. average for recycling is twenty-one point four percent. I'm super excited. Rawlins is at twenty-seven point three percent. So huge thank you to the citizens. But I really want to recognize Tony, Claude, and Pat. And then this is Matt, who's been a huge help for us while we're shorthanded. I also want to thank the landfill employees who aren't here that also help us when we need help. And I mean, it is only two and a half employees. So that's Tammy, Willie, and Mike, and then any other employees that help. But I just want to congratulate them. I'm super proud of them. And that's a lot of recycled materials, so, and that's their.
Congratulations. You guys do all the hard work. Where are you going?
Thank you, gentlemen. Good work. Great work, guys.
Somebody has spoken.
Oh, Sean.
Honorable Mayor and Council, if I could have Ben Gross come up for a second? So Ben was nominated for the Robert Moore Award. And to get some perspective on that, there's one in about four hundred people that received this in a year. So it's a pretty awesome award to get. I just wanted to read the statement that was written about Ben. He's he's been with the city going on eight years. The pride he takes in his work is remarkable. He trains new employees as well as anyone who needs help passing a CDL. Ben, like many of us, is a jack of all trades and is constantly looking out for his crew and their safety, no matter what the task is. He is the first person to say, good work at the end of a shift. And he is also the first person most operators call when in doubt. So needless to say, this operator carries a large amount of weight that is not his own because of his passion for the system and his fellow operators, and thank you for all that you do. So I think we could give him a round of applause for his.
Congratulations, Ben. All right. DeBarton, do you have something?
Yes, I do. I received some calls in regard to this trailer parking thing. And what it was, was somewhere along the line, it came out that the decision made to put it on the ballot is not, not correct. It's my understanding that because of the form of government that we have, if we were the mayor form of government, we could have done it. But because we're the manager form of government, it's not allowed by the state to put it on the ballot, other than if the county wanted to do it themselves, is my understanding. I have touched bases because I had some calls on it and they want to know what was going to go on. And I told them that I had touched bases with the county attorney's office. And she was going to send me something in the writing that shows what that law, what that law means. Having said that, I think that what I would like to see is this council have a work session and discuss this particular ordinance, make the changes that we need to make, if we have to make any, and bring it back on the table. So that's where I'm at.
Hey, DeBarton? Is there anybody else out there that?
Would you like me to respond?
Yeah, would you? Amy?
First, I would like to thank County Attorney Davis for reaching out to my office when those requests were made and for providing a response today. As discussed on October twenty-first, two thousand twenty, the Wyoming statutes regarding initiatives strictly limit initiative proceedings to commissioner form of governments. Wyoming, State of Wyoming recognizes three forms of government. Mayor council form of government, city manager form of government, and a commissioner form of government. City would operate under the city manager form of government. So the idea of an initiative, which is pro, where you would petition for legislation on a specific issue, is foreclosed to the, to us because we're not a commission form of government. When you proceed to the referendum section, it appears that the city has the opportunity. And I know that there was discussion about other cities or towns doing a referendum ballot. That is not limited to commissioner form of government. It has specific requirements for the city clerk to identify. But it requires an ordinance at first. It requires that the governing body adopt an ordinance that within twenty days after the ordinance is first published, that ten percent of the qualified electors registered in the city or town at the time of filing have filed that referendum. It is then, there's requirements on the petition, setting forth a full and contained ordinance, signatures and addresses of those qualified electors. It's then the city clerk's position to determine whether or not it meets the requirements of Wyoming statute twenty-two, twenty-three, one oh five. If the governing body, upon certification by the city clerk, does not repeal that ordinance in completely, then it shall be a question of the electors of the municipality in the same manner as the initiative. And the initiative talks about within twenty days, you shall do this, within sixty days, you shall do that. So it would appear that the city could move forward with that. And it, and this goes back to Wyomingites have had this opportunity of proposing or enacting laws by the initiative process or rejecting legislative acts by referendum since nineteen sixty-eight. Those changes in legislation have occurred over time. But in this instance, this is what I believe is, is the controlling issue in this matter. The people may approve or reject acts of the legislature by referendum. However, the referendum shall not be applied to dedications of revenue, to apportionments, to local or special legislation, or to laws necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, or safety. And so that information was provided on October twenty-first. I believe the email that was, was sent by, and I won't speak for her, coincided with the language clearly found within Wyoming state statutes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, anybody else out there that would like to talk? Keith Palmer?
Honorable Mayor and Council members. Yesterday, late yesterday afternoon, we received a special events application for a street closure on Buffalo Street between Third and Second Street. And they wanted to do it from the middle of the street to the north because they are remodeling the Carbon County building and they need to do demolition. So they needed, they wanted to block out that part of the, for safety purposes. We met today, this morning, at our, at our meeting. Pam Rees, Staff to Copper France, he's okay with what we've decided as well. We want to have the fence permanently put there. They, they suggested they'd move it back and forth in the morning, move it out in the night, move it back in. We're just going to leave it right down the middle of the road with proper signage, real reflective tape for at night, so they can see it. No parking on the south side of Buffalo Street. So it'll be a one-way only, just between Third and Second Street. And, and also signage out of the commerce to turn right. So they're not impeding, running the fence either, so. That's our suggestion.
Traffic will come up Third, turn right on Buffalo.
Correct. And they can either turn left at Second Street or right at Second Street once they get, it's just for that one block. One block. Yeah. It's for the safety of the, of everybody. The, in case we have a snowstorm, it'll be easier for them to plow that, that one lane with no parked cars there.
So then, then Bank Palmer just tells people not to park along that street.
Right, yeah. And there'll be some signs, we, we suggest to put temporary signage up there for no parking, temporary signage for the one-way. It's only for, they have it on here from eleven to, which was yesterday, to the twenty-third of November. So.
About three weeks.
About three-week timeframe, so it's just going to be a temporary structure at that time.
When will this go into effect then?
Tomorrow, first thing tomorrow morning.
They'll be able to resume.
Yeah, we're going to send an email tonight and so they can get it all going in the morning.
And they're, I think they're going to do cones along the fences, what?
Cones, yeah.
Because that'll have the reflective tape, so at night it'll.
So the delineations there and so forth?
Yeah. I just want to bring that to your attention since it came so quickly.
Okay. Councilman Singer?
What are you doing on Second where you would normally turn right to come down that street? Are you blocking that street off right there? So there's only one lane that can go out, not a lane that can go in?
Second, turn and left, you mean?
Turning right onto, turning right onto Buffalo.
They'll have signage on, on all roadways that that's a one-way.
Intersection.
Yep.
And just so I mentioned, Copper did, go ahead, while we were waiting for this, he did send an email to the employees, not usually to run Buffalo Street, to actually stop parking already today. So that's already been done, so it won't be a shock for me. So that's already been taken.
Okay.
So that's why we worked it together, like police, fire, other parks, the streets department worked together on getting this done and completed.
I appreciate you guys working on that today and getting that resolved so that they can resume activities.
So they can resume it first thing in the morning.
I have no objection to their issues, but I mean, they're good at that part. I mean, they're not blocking anything.
I don't think so, because, because they were originally going to move the fence every day and I, I just said, leave the fence.
It's better to get people used to it than back and forth.
Yeah, we just need to make sure we have copper signage for safety and stuff.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Hey, is there anyone else that would like to come up during public comment? On their way run, okay? We'll move on down to item B, which is a proclamation. It's a National Apprenticeship Week. So a proclamation of the City of Rawlins, Carbon County, Wyoming declaring National Apprenticeship, Apprenticeship Week. Whereas National Apprenticeship Week is celebrating its sixth anniversary of raising awareness of the vital role apprenticeships provide in creating a qualified and highly skilled workforce in diverse industries found in Rawlins and across this great nation. And whereas advancement of well-being of the United States of America depends upon the continued development of skilled workers in their chosen fields. And whereas an ever-growing number of jobs, creators, and career seekers are discovering the benefits of apprenticeships, unique learning, while you're earn your model. And whereas the City of Rawlins recognizes the robust apprenticeship program provide tangible value to both job creators and apprentice with the potential to increase productivity, improve diversity and inclusion, and reduce recruitment and training costs while providing a pathway to prosperous career for the job seekers. Now therefore, I, Steve Nicholson, Mayor of the City of Rawlins, Carbon County, Wyoming, do hereby declare November eighth, two thousand twenty, through November fourteenth, two thousand twenty, as National Apprenticeship Week in the City of Rawlins. How's tough one? All right. Now we'll move on down to item three, approval of the minutes of October twentieth. Councilman Wells?
I motion to approve the city council regular meeting minutes of October twentieth, two thousand twenty, as presented.
Okay. We have a first and a second. Steve Sanger already beat you with that. Is anybody opposed to that motion that was made? If not, Sherri, would you open online voting, please?
Sherri? I can't, I, it's not logging in, so I'll just say yes.
Okay, the voting is closed.
Amy?
And the motion carries with seven days.
All right, thank you. Now we'll move on down to correspondence and reports. First item is the city manager report.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Council. I have a few things I'd like to report on tonight.
I have a few things I'd like to report on tonight. I am now two people away from finishing my one-on-one visits with you. So I just wanted to tell you I'm excited about that. I actually, last night I spent probably about two hours visiting with some police officers that worked in the evenings. And I'm like, I've got to finish visiting with people. But I, I just would say we have a lot of really, really great people that work here and that are really dedicated to what they do. And I've learned a lot from listening to them, so it's been, it's been awesome.
Good.
I, another thing that got me really excited is that Jody has been working really hard on getting some budget documents that will be coming to council pretty soon. And when she gave it to me, I'm like, I'm going to take this home tonight and read it. And then I ended up a police officer. So anyway, just good stuff is, is happening, so I appreciate the work she's doing on that. Another thing I would mention is that Jody and I attended the, the recent WAM conference and we learned about a really good opportunity to receive some funding through SLIB for COVID-related expenses. And we're going to put together in the next two weeks, resolution or something that we can present to SLIB, but we'll bring it to council in, in two weeks. But we're going to just try and get as much reimbursement as we can for COVID-related expenses. I was really encouraged because I, I visited with a couple of cities there. The city of Cody received pretty substantial amount of money from this. If we can get a million dollars out of this, I will be ecstatic. So we'll do what we can. We'll do our very best to put something together and I'll let you know how that goes.
Okay.
And then, as I mentioned at the last city council meeting, we wanted to present some information for our incoming council members as well as existing council members. So we'd like to do a training or perhaps, if it's okay with all of you, a work session on December 1st to do some training for, for council members. And then we also want to bring some other information to, to give us such as budget information. We were trying to put together kind of like a one pager of each department, kind of a summary of what we look like and that sort of thing. So I'd like to, to do that.
That sounds like a wonderful idea, speaking from some experience with that. I like that idea.
Okay, yeah, the, the intention is to give everyone as much information as possible. So especially for new council members as they're coming in to have all the tools that they need to feel like they've kind of got a grasp on what they'll be doing here. So, all right. Another thing that I learned attending the WAM conference is that there, and we probably, we probably have all heard this sort of discussion, but the, the state of Wyoming is living on its reserves to operate, which is not sustainable. They were current, they were trying to keep a reserve of 500 million. And then they said that by FY '22, they should be at 150 million dollars in reserve. So they're just, you know, it's just eaten down there. Eventually, I would suspect that they're going to need to bring in some, either some new sort of tax to, to deal with that or increase some sort of taxes to be able to maintain operations. But it's something that we need to be always aware of as, as they're having cuts. I know that there are other cities. I was, I was trying to, I was trying to ask like what, you know, what's this look like for other cities in Wyoming? What kind of cuts are they doing there? One person reported to me who seemed like he had a good concept or a good understanding of that is that they had, a lot of them are between 10 and 20% cuts in their budget. And I mentioned that I was with Carbon County and they're like, oh, yeah, you guys that are doing so well. Like we're one of the few counties or one of just a couple that are doing very well because of all the construction that's going on and the income that's coming into the city. So I just want to say we're very fortunate right now. But also would say we need to be mindful of what's happening at the state as we're budgeting and trying to be as conservative as possible for, you know, when or if those construction projects start to dwindle, that we're in really good shape. This is the one thing I've expressed to staff is like, the, the last thing that I want for them is to be worried about, am I going to be losing my job? And, you know, then when those concerns start to happen, I just want to avoid that as, as much as humanly possible. So, all right. And then the last thing, Councilwoman Smith asked me, Public Works Department and our engineer to take a look at one-way, one-way streets. And we did, we did do that. So I sent an email to all of our staff and just asked for input. I asked them to just report on pros and cons. And then the process to, to get one-way streets here if we wanted to do that. And then also their recommendations for which streets. So with that, the, the streets that they recommended that could be turned into one-way that made the most sense was Eighth, Ninth, Twelfth, from Walnut to High Street. And then not Eleventh because it's, it goes with the traffic light that we have. And then the, the process they explained would be a presentation to our urban systems committee with info on the affected streets and, and costs. And of course, public notice would be given. And then they would make a recommendation to city council, which, and then city council could make the final decision on that. And if council approved, then Public Works would work to order signs and call and locate. Public Works would then install the new signs. And then we would work with community relations and the police department on an educational component for citizens that would take time to understand that process and what that would look like for them. The cost there would be with these streets, 30 signs. There are about 165 each. So, and that doesn't include labor maintenance. So it'd just be about $5,000 to do something not, not significant really. So the, and then also, along with the email that I sent out to get the pros and cons, we met this morning as an entire group to just kind of talk through it a little bit. And so these next comments are from the whole group. So the pros, it, it would help with snow removal if parking is only allowed on one side of the street, which is how our current ordinance reads is that if we have one-way street, they would be on the one side there. Backing out of the, out of people's driveways is safer on one-way streets because you're just looking at one, one side rather than two. And on the, on the con side, traffic flow would be improved, which would increase your speeds in residential areas, which was kind of a concern for, for staff as they're just thinking about citizens and maybe those with, you know, younger kids. And if we increase the, the speed, that, that was a concern. It, for some residents, it would increase the travel time. There would be, if people are just parking on one side of the street, then there would be a reduced amount of parking spots because they would be forced to just go on one side. One, let's see, one-way streets make parking more appealing because of the perception that it's safer going on, going one-way. There were some concerns about safety that the police and fire mentioned. You know, if they had to respond to an incident and it was one-way, they're just going to, they're going to go, even if they have to go the wrong way, they're going to go to get there as fast as they can. So that could be an issue. And I'm sure they could, if you have more questions about that, they can speak to other concerns that they had. There would be fewer routes to drive on. This is another comment that if, if, I've heard from last year that with the ice on some of the streets, there, there was a lot of rust. And if you were only having to go on, on one street, maybe you'd be forced to just go down one street and it would reduce your options, I guess. Another comment was that the education piece of one-way streets takes about a year from the first sign placement to really getting people to understand what's going on and actually being in compliance. And then the last comment is that I guess some of, in the little parking strips where we have our trees in these residential areas, that sometimes the trees have been taken out to be able to park there. And if we do have less places to park, maybe more of the trees get taken out, which goes to our beautification might be a little worse there. So we, as a staff, we're very supportive of whatever the council would like to do. We just present the pros and cons and we're happy to, to do what you'd like. So, and that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you for that, Sean. Now move on down to department reports. It's like, Chief Palmer's going to lead the pack.
Thank you. Honorable mayor and council. We get to the right form here. Okay, here we go. We had, a couple of weeks ago, we actually got an email from a staff member with Governor Gordon's office asking about our handle care program that we, it's a national program that we've implemented about five years ago with our schools. So they're looking at doing it statewide and basing it upon how we've done it for the last five years. So that's pretty good news for the Rawlins Police Department. The trick-or-treat with the police at the parks went well Saturday, I think. If you've seen our Facebook post, we've, we've had some pictures on there that looked really well. I think it's something that's, I'm going to throw them out there, but I think it's something we'll probably do every year from now on because it went so well. Animal control, we had two adopt-a-thons. I told you about the one on the 24th is after the 20th council meeting. They did it for two hours. They adopted four cats. And then they had another one on Halloween. They decided to do it again and they adopted two cats and one dog. So they, they really like doing it at the animal shelter because it gives the opportunity for people to actually view all the animals instead of just a select few that they take to somewhere else. Our 911 center, they're still working on the emergency police dispatch and emergency fire dispatch, but this week it's quality assurance testing. So they're just getting closer and closer to implementation on December 19th, or excuse me, December 15th is when that's going. And then I have a new house center now and it's called Code Enforcement. And Brian Market is our new code enforcement officer. He started yesterday. So if you see him and hopefully he'll be introduced to you this week sometime or in the near future. And just to let you know, we are going to be working with him on educating people on trailer parking and other parking issues. That's going to be part of his job as a code enforcement officer. Because during the winter time, some nuisance, nuisance basement issues are harder to find because they're buried in snow and ice. So he could still do some of these parking issues and educate the public properly do that. So that might take care of the trailer ordinance in the future because that's one of the biggest things that I heard was that we don't enforce our ordinances enough. Well, if we can educate people on these ordinance specifically adhere to parking, then maybe we'll solve our problem. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Jason.
Good evening. I would like to let you know that we are looking at our, some of our infrastructure with the computers and printers. I know a finance printer has crashed and no longer working. So we are looking citywide as to what we need. And I plan on giving a quote for that. However, I do not at this point anticipate coming for another supplemental appropriation, but rather monitoring the budget and if we need to at a future date, then I'll come. But usually there's enough left over at the end of the year to cover these sort of things. So at this point, I'll see how much it comes in at and make a determination from there, but I don't anticipate doing that. Wanted to let you know that the auditors are finally here. And so they will be here all week. And then I will be talking with them to find out how do we get them back in August. Hopefully by that time when that, that comes around again, COVID will be not as detrimental as it is now. And so they'll be able to get here in August like they usually do. And also to remind you that next week I'll be providing you some financial reports to, and I'll go over those and how to read them and what they're useful for. And so you can look forward to actually getting some information next week.
Okay.
Thank you.
Come on up, Dan. Honorable mayor.
And council. I just wanted to let you know we had a really nice Halloween celebration at the rec center this year. And that I'd really like to recognize Patty Hayes and Terrick Papsky putting it on. They did a very good job. We had a lot of pressure as far as the health and safety. And the community really pitched in and made it a good event. I was real happy about that. Right now we have girls' basketball is starting this week, so that's pretty exciting. That's junior jazz. We also have the co-ed volleyball is, is starting. We're doing camps for the kids too. Let's see, what else? The Ino Range officially opened tonight, so hopefully we'll have some pretty good turnout. We have, I'll still wait, I believe his last name is, I just can't. He's helped quite a bit. He's, he's new this, this summer, but he's taking the ball and he's created a really good thing. Okay, one other thing. Oh, and the greens covers. We got the greens covers done on the golf course yesterday. Robert Graciano picked the perfect day for it. I don't know how he did it, but he did it. And so we had a lot of help. I'd like to thank Public Works for helping us also. It was a community thing. We had volunteers from the golf advisory board that helped too. And we were able to knock it out pretty much before the wind came up. And once the wind came up, we all just ganged up on one green at a time. So that's what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Mayor and council, our department's been very busy in the last month. We have been able to, how do I put this? Have six guys or six different state certifications that guys have picked up throughout the month. Various options of things that we're, we're working through. That's on the paid and volunteer side, both on that. Our ambulance that we requested back in September, I think, when we, we talked about that, that ambulance is now here on Sparkin Fire Station One. It still needs some time and some efforts to get it ready to be in service. It's a used ambulance, of course, and it needs a little cleaning, a little TLC that way. Still have to put the radio in and all the, maybe some graphics on it, that kind of stuff. So make it ours, that type of stuff. So also, month of October is Fire Prevention Week. We, it stretches out to that between October 1st and November 2nd. We had contact with 699 kids, 428 adults. A total of 1,127 people in the month, month and a day. We've had those contacts and had some of the good stuff. Also, my guys had a blast out here up front with the Antha Trick-or-Treat thing. It was a great success. We had, I don't know if you have any down there. We had the big ladder truck parked right here in front of City Hall. Had a whole bunch of kids, they were just loving it, it was great. Our efforts on our repeater are still ongoing. Have meeting this week to continue working through the FCC licensing and stuff that we need to get that up. So our communications are going to be up and going great. That's all I have for you.
Thank you, hon.
So at Public Works, we are working on a snow removal MOU with the county. We have that in draft form, but that'll be coming to you guys in the commissioners shortly. Our 2019 water project and our streets projects have gone into winter shutdown for the year, so those will kick back up about mid-May. We are working on numerous dangerous buildings right now. We're finalizing the, working with legal to finalize the easement with Ryan Brothers Trucking for that new storm sewer infrastructure over there between Daley and McMacon, and that'll close out that project. And then I got to brag on streets a little bit because they are caught up right now until tomorrow on street cuts. And they're shutting the hot mix plant down for winter, but they got a lot of patching done this year and they are amping up for winter and calling some salt sand and stuff. So, thank you.
Thank you. Amy?
Honorable counsel, at the last meeting, there was a question regarding political signs and political speech, and I wasn't prepared to give a response. At this time, I don't see the resident, but I did promise to bring this back. So essentially, the First Amendment prohibits the government from abridging the freedom of speech, but it does not clearly define what that speech or freedom entails. The, the United States Supreme Court has long interpretate, interpreted the clause to protect against government regulations of certain core areas of protected speech. The Supreme Court has recognized that the First Amendment's protections extend to individual and collective. The Supreme Court has recognized that the First Amendment's protections extend to individual and collective speech in pursuit of a wide variety of political, social, economic, educational, religious, and cultural ends. And that's citing Roberts versus U.S. J.C.'s in 1984. The question at hand was an issue regarding a political, um, either a political sign or a political flag that was, um, on someone's private property. The United States Supreme Court has long considered political and ideological speech to be at the core of the First Amendment, including speech concerning politics, nationalism, religion, or other matters of opinion. And that was citing West Virginia State Board of Education versus, versus Barnett in 1943. Political speech can take other forms beyond the written or spoken word such as money, and that's the Buckley v. Vallejo in 1976. Or in Texas versus Johnson, they expand, expanded that to include symbolic acts. I think we're all familiar with burning of the flag and, in that situation. A government regulation that implicates political or ideological speech generally received strict scrutiny, which is the highest scrutiny that, that we can, that, that can be imposed. Uh, it is such a high standard that the government must show that the law is narrowly tailored to achieve a compelling government interest. So we would have to look at our, what's currently on the, on the books as far as ordinance and regulations, and then determine whether or not it's narrowly tailored to meet a substantial or compelling government interest, uh, for regulating political speech. I believe that answers the question regarding that. There was some discussion about obscenity. Unfortunately, or fortunately, obscenity, um, according to, uh, case law and contemporary standards, it must be at, on the whole, appeal to the prurient interest in sex. Depict or describe sexual conduct defined by state law in a patently offensive way and lack serious literacy, literary, art, artistic, political, or scientific value. And that was cited in Miller versus California in 413, uh, U.S. in 1973. What's important is most decisions from the Supreme Court have narrowly begun to tailor what the government can do. They're not expanding our ability, um, to regulate. They're in fact trying to hone in on, um, limiting the, the government's infringement on First Amendment rights. But of course it will be something that we will be respond, we will respond to if the issue comes. My office does not, um, direct law enforcement in any manner. They go out and they enforce the codes and they use their best judgment and discretion in enforcing those codes. Now, they don't have discretion in the enforcement of the codes, but they have great discretion in how they choose to enforce the codes, whether it be a, an, a verbal warning, a written warning, a citation, uh, or those, those remedies or those issues available to the police department. But again, my office, even if I received an issue, I would not be directing, uh, Chief Palmer or his police officers. Those violations should be ran through the police department who, who, uh, will investigate those matters and, and perform their due diligence in determining whether or not there is a violation and if so, how they are going to treat that violation at that time.
Any questions? Pam?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. So wow, um, we thought that Saturday, or excuse me, Saturday, Friday afternoon was gonna be a little more quiet than usual. And, you know, we had over 1,500 kids downtown, just a few kids running around. Um, we kinda had a trifecta, um, not leaving out, but I was trying to get another D and take it past trifecta with the fire, um, truck and everything, but we had dogs, we had dancing, and we had donkeys. Now, can't add like any other community to have a donkey at the same time we have dogs dressed up plus dancing in the street. So it was, it was an amazing, amazing, amazing. 1,500 kiddos, great event on Friday. So we wanna thank, um, Stephanie Paulson and her husband for volunteering and everybody working together, getting the cones out and just having a great event. The other thing I'm gonna let you know is the Wyoming Business Council did open its final round of grant funding. Um, it opened it yesterday morning at 10 o'clock and it goes through November 18th. There's two funds. There's an ag fund and there's an endurance fund. And I can tell you, as of 9 o'clock this morning, 23 hours, there was, um, 69 applications or 6 million in the ag already submitted and 1,000 in the endurance at 113 million in 23 hours. Also in 23 hours, we had seven Carbon County grants totaling 35 million just in Carbon County. So those are the stats, um, that I have for the Business Council information. Yeah, so we're really, I mean, I think Carbon County and Rollins as a whole, I have a list of all the Rollins, um, businesses that have received grants so far to the state. So it's, it's exciting to see that, that there's some good care's money going to help our local businesses. Talking about the changes at the Carbon Building, um, we, unbeknownst to me, I got a call the other day that wheelness a metal saddle, a saddle sculpture. You know, and I love how they call me and I get this call and say, hey Pam, are you gonna move your saddle sculpture? Why don't you put it down by the, the lambs and sheep? I'm like, what are you talking about? So the city of Rollins was given a metal saddle. Um, I guess it was in the eighties. I'm trying to track it down still, but, um, Danielle did.
We already picked it up today.
Okay, so we have possession of it and I'm working and I probably at the next council meeting, I'm kinda scoping out where it'll go and give you guys an opportunity where you would like that placed. Is I, the one part I did understand from somebody who called me today was that they donated to the city of Rollins for the downtown. So I'm just kinda looking and I'm gonna confirm that and see what you guys would like to do with the bronze saddle that was sitting in front of the stairs going into the library off Buffalo Street. And then the last thing I have for you guys is. This is the first two events of five events that'll be happening in the next 40 days in the downtown. So, um, this is high season. We are gonna be doing everything with social distancing, being super safe. But, um, we've decided Black Friday, kinda, we've been kind of dark lately with everything going on. So we renamed, um, Black Friday, Blue Plaid Friday, kinda to find a roll in with Small Business Saturday colors. And we're getting, um, some fun ideas that, with that, the Downtown Committee is meeting tomorrow to finalize. We are having a scavenger hunt, kinda get a hunt for, um, the logos. Either one of the logos of Blue Plaid Friday or Shop Saturday, a chance to win $200 in Main Street money. And they'll be in, in the stores. And the reason we're picking Blue Plaid Friday up, which we haven't in the past, is there's a lot of service businesses that, um, really are important to our downtown, I mean, every business is, but they can never participate in Small Business Saturday because they're closed, like the banks or, you know, maybe a realtor or something like that. So we're combining efforts for two days. And then, of course, we brought back, um, R and B State Bank is sponsoring again. The shop downtown went big. So, um, in three weeks, we're gonna be giving over $750 in Main Street money. I mean, I, it's, this is the time of year we continue to just put money into the economy so we can, they can send, spend it in the downtown businesses. Any questions?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pam. Is that all the department heads? I believe so. We'll move on down to approval of the agenda. Councilman Sanger?
I move to approve the November 3rd, 2020 city council agenda as presented.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Is there any objections to that motion that was made? If not, Sherry, would you open online voting, please? M1 verbal?
Yes.
Online voting is closed and motion carries with 78.
Okay. Next thing we have here is a board appointment for downtown development. The appointment would be for Stephanie McDaniel. Would you like to come up and speak? Tell us a little bit about yourself and why you would like this appointment?
I'm Stephanie McDaniel. Um, I've been a resident of Rollins for just about 14 years now. Been in Wyoming about 20 years. My kids have spent their whole school career here and, and, uh, both my husband and I are both in the oil and gas and, and, uh, just like to, now that I have some time, get involved since my kids are getting older and, and, uh, looking forward to serving on the board with, with Pam and, and the others that I've met. I haven't met everybody yet, but, um, they've done great things and, and I'm looking forward to being part of that.
Okay. Any questions for Stephanie? Councilwoman Woman Wells?
I am moved to approve the appointment of Stephanie McDaniel to the Downtown Development Committee Main Street Advisory Board for the term ending December 31st.
Will you get a second? Councilman Sanger, a second, please? We'll use Linda as a second on that. Thank you, Linda. Is there any objections to that motion that was made? Sherry, would you open online voting, please?
Yes.
Online voting is closed and motion carries with 78.
Congratulations, Stephanie. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now you can tell her the truth, Pam. All right, now we'll move on down to unfinished business. And ordinance third and final reading amending Rollins Municipal Code 19 dash 40 dash 050 fences. Councilman Martinez?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve on third and final reading and waive the reading of the ordinance amending Rollins Municipal Code Title 19.40.050 fences.
Can I get a second? Councilwoman Wells, second, sir? Is there any questions or discussions in regards to this ordinance? There's no objections either, then Sherry, would you open online voting, please?
Yes.
Online voting is closed and motion carries with 78.
Okay. Now, can we get a motion for approval of payroll? Councilman Sanger?
I move to approve the October 11th, 2020 through October 24th, 2020 payroll register for $228,119.04.
I have a second by Councilman Martinez. Any questions or objections to that motion that was made? Sherry, would you open on, online voting, please?
Yes.
Okay, online voting is closed and motion carries with 78.
All right, thank you. Now if I can get a motion for accounts payable, Councilman Sanger?
I move to approve the accounts payable register for the period of October 13th, 2020 to October 23rd, 2020 in the amount of $241,187.68.
Councilman Durs, a second on that? If there's no objections, uh, Sherry, would you open online voting, please?
Yes.
Online voting is closed and motion carries with 78.
Okay, now move on down to approve a bid award for the Peking Reservoir to Atlantic Rim AC Pipe Replacement Project. Councilman Sanger?
I move to award the AC Pipeline Replacement Project, the Viper Underground, in the amount of $448,520.
Can I get a second? I also like, uh, Councilman Martinez, second, sir? Danielle?
Honorable Mayor and City Council, um, we did put this project out to bid and we received five bids. We did have a base bid and an alternate bid. The base bid was to slip line the pipe, um, and the alternate would be to actually dig it up and replace it. And we did, the bids ranged from the $448,520 to seven, just over $750,000. Um, this budget, the actual construction comes in right under our budget. With engineering, it'll be slightly over, however, we do have 20,000 in our current operating budget to cover the engineering. So there would be no budget amendment. Viper Underground was the lowest responsive bidder and they will be digging it up, um, and replacing it. This is the pipeline that runs between our reservoirs, um, Atlantic Rim to Peking. And I did, do have Danny here because he is our expert person on this. If you guys have any questions, um, either one of us will help you with that.
When will that work take place?
They're looking at, they're looking at March. So it's actually the perfect winter project because it's out in the middle of nowhere and they don't have to worry about all the other utilities or tearing up the street that has to be replaced. Um, so the contractor is, um, did indicate that they would look at about March time.
Okay. Any other questions?
I'm just, I, so the replacement, it just, after all the bids came in, just, that was just a better way to go.
Yeah.
Versus what it just.
We weren't really sure, the engineer wasn't 100% because they, um, had kinda looked at, they thought it might be cheaper to just run it through the, because it is going to be, it's 20 now, it'll go to 12 inch. So they thought it might be easier to run the new 12 inch through the old one, but it ended up not being. So that's why we wanted to have both so we could get the best bang for our buck.
Okay. There's no other questions and Sherry, would you open online voting, please?
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Online voting is closed and motion carries with 78.
Okay, thank you. Now we need to approve the city of Rollins representative to support wind energy development and oppose any proposed changes to the wind generation tax. Councilman Sanger?
I move to authorize the city of Rollins to represent the city's support for wind energy development in opposition to any proposed changes to the wind generation tax before the Minerals, Business, and Economic Development Committee, the Corporations Committee, and the Joint Revenue Committee held this month.
Do we have a particular person that we would like to, to represent for us?
Mr. Mayor, at the last COG meeting, um, I made a motion to send two members from COG to, uh, to this, to these business meetings in Cheyenne. And so in doing that, I, I discussed with the mayor that, that we should have somebody go. And I, I think Amy would be, uh, if she can and has the time, go and represent us, uh, at these meetings. I, I think that she'd do a very good job for us.
Good. I, I would agree with that. Um, probably need to add that to the motions.
I would amend the motion to.
Honorable Mayor and Council, I did actually put it in this way because there are three separate hearings and I did not want to be limited if something came up with one staff member. So like maybe Amy does two and Jody does one or something.
That's right, there is, there is two and, and I didn't know if they were, uh, what the dates were on it. I had asked that question and they give me an answer.
Um, I believe it's the 5th, the 11th, and either the 19th or 20th. And also, um, some of these at least are being held via Zoom.
Right.
We will be coordinating, um, a way that you can also all come and show participation or to speak.
Okay.
I'd like to thank the council for their support and, and, uh, offering to send me or to have me speak on your behalf. It's quite an honor.
Okay.
We, we do want to too, though, right?
I don't know if we need to, um.
I don't, I don't think it makes a difference, but anyway.
Do those dates look like they work for you, Amy?
I think it's really, really important that we do send someone.
Yeah.
And if we have to send two, that's fine for the kind of money that the, uh, wind energies bringing into our community and, and we'd hate to, we'd hate to lose them or have slower projects.
Well, we can definitely have, you know, if somebody wants to amend the motion, they have Amy and Jody and they can both go together because it wouldn't hurt to have two representatives. And also for Jody to, to witness what goes on with the wind energy, um, with this deal because she's gonna be the one that's kinda taking care of those finances when they do come in and so forth and the whole money situation, so.
I just wanted to clarify. I just want to get clarification. I read, so are all of these, all of these meetings are being held via Zoom? Or are they all being held, or some Zoom?
We don't know for sure.
I know that at least the, the one on the 5th is more of an informal discussion. That one is for sure on Zoom. The one on the 11th, I believe, is at least partially on Zoom. I'm getting conflicting information and I'm not an expert. And I don't know about the 19th and 20th yet. Amy, have you heard anything?
No, there was a change to the corporations' agenda that was released first thing this morning. And what we've kind of experienced on this wind energy component is just to be prepared for last minute additions to the agenda and be prepared to, if you can, appear in person, appear in person.
Okay.
Being that I attended the last time we had this problem come up, I can't tell you how powerful it was to have delegation of people from Carbon County testifying at those meetings. And it was, I mean, it was real, real powerful and it worked. So I think it's really important that we sent two and that they're, they're there to answer any questions or to pass the message that this can, this works, wind energy project.
Let's see, some, you guys would like to amend your motion to add both Amy and Jody?
I would, I would make a motion to amend that we send Jody and the city attorney to Cheyenne to testify with the legislature.
A second? So if there's no objection to that, then Sherry, if you want to open the online voting for the amendment?
Turns out it's typing like crazy.
No, she's still typing.
I did the original motion.
You did the original. Who seconded it?
Well, if I amended, then I seconded the amendment.
And I think Vary seconded the first motion. Okay.
Oh, the bar?
Yeah.
Wait a second.
Yeah, so Singer and Dars from National Motion, you need to vary.
Yeah, it's the right motion. She'll just tend to get it right on Zoom.
I was trying to hit me and Jody there.
Thanks for your solid advice.
Words aren't important. We'll clear that up later.
I did the first motion.
Well, I know that now it hasn't worked because not present.
I didn't see you, Lee, Steve.
Well, welcome back, boys.
I don't want to play anymore.
Yes, I'm voting yea.
Okay, so online voting is closed and motion carries for seven days.
All right, thank you. Now we'll move on down to executive session. If I can get a motion, Councilman Sanger?
Move to go into executive session at 8:33 per Wyoming statute 1644052 to consider the appointment employment right to practice or dismissal of a public officer, professional person, or employee, or to hear complaints or charges brought against an employee, professional person, or officer unless the employee, professional person, or officer requests a public hearing. The governing body may exclude from any private or public hearing during the examination of the witness, any and all other witnesses in the matter being investigated. Following the hearing or executive session, the governing body may deliberate on its decision in executive session and nine to consider or receive any information classified as confidential by law.
Can I get a second? Okay, we have a first and a second. Any objections to that motion that was made to go into executive session? If not, Sherry, would you open online voting, please?
I think you should.
No chance. Delegate. Wow, I'm trying to tap the screen.
Online voting is closed and motion carries for seven days.
All right, if you are in executive session, we will go downstairs.